I'm not corrupted.
It was a cruise or something.
You can just let me talk and then you can do whatever you want. Gordon, you here for our thing?
I'm here.
How about, how about...
Do you know the next one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, you want me to call that now? So, three two. I got a full one.
No.
Yes, you have a relative, right? Yes, I mean, I know whose college is serving.
Right.
I was appointed in the morning.
You called my house? Do you know that in twenty, in twenty nineteen, I don't get a medical exception from Lincoln because there's food, they scoop. They have phone numbers.
Yeah.
Sell me solar panels. When people... People... You sound like some...
Oh, yeah.
Forgot about it.
Yeah.
Some guy from the...
I do work on a night. Well, I'm young. It'll be a whole different class depending on what area and the summer. The first national back in Tom's River, you know, they will, you know, that just... The old, what I call, I went to school with all their kids. They were like... They were like my dad's age, you know? They're usually all ninety's old. I'm sorry? Well, Harry was, Harry was.
A lot of those guys also. They went, they went to...
So, I'm similar. Right.
After doing that, they came back.
Right. Sorry. Absolutely, absolutely.
Why would you worry about what you're doing?
Were you complaining?
I didn't complain. I mean, it's not true.
And I think it's up to them.
It's great.
But they can't show. Right.
Next thing, I'm getting the tea.
That's a good one. That is a good one.
You can share it tonight.
That might be a problem.
We're going to build up to the ladies before next week. I can't get on, I, I seem to be able to get on everything else. I can't seem to get on.
I don't feel that really.
The, uh, the promotion to the... I have a version. Or this will be a promotion if I do get a version.
I don't...
I don't surprise.
I don't know if you guys enjoy it. Friendly to get... That's really my class, that's the name, you know?
Right.
That's the control, so it's there, the reason. What's the students' part with what he has about?
Oh, so.
Is he on?
Yes. What, what's that?
Yeah.
I don't want to hear of the planet.
Oh, they'll...
There you go. There you are. There you go.
So, what's the purpose of the non- use experience, non-use experience?
All right.
Poor woman.
Did I purpose this? Just two, two weeks before that. General purpose.
The only great man that is with us, what is in just where?
It's great. Exactly. Yeah. I told that, I was doing the deposition for this, I told you. About you and me, you know? You represented me, that was the first house I ever bought. I asked my dad, I said, "Call me a name, friend." Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was nineteen ninety-three. And I, I asked my dad, I said, "Who am I the most representative in this month?" And he said, "It's all there, thank you." Because he doesn't really play. I come to learn this is an awesome place.
I hear you have just someone.
He was a player. Nice. Nice.
This is why I should place my set down so that goes as... This is not...
I just wanted to do everything.
Exactly, exactly.
He might rent, I just... I just see where it is. Read them.
There, there, where is your...
Brought it up to show. Jumping out.
I'm gonna be my ears on everyone.
Yeah, that's it, right?
Yeah.
I got a... I'm not working. I'm still working. Consider being... No, I should be. Alan. So, our birthday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm useful.
But that was more... Supporting the increase in intensification because we're... Exactly, 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 exactly. They went into the... Now we're talking about about three hundred.
Jerry's playing close up. Seaside, you are silly.
Jerry's side, yes?
Yes, I am. Um, we like... Please bring him. Yes.
Randy, we're up here.
I don't have a...
Right.
Jerry's... You can be Jerry too. Religious, that's why...
No secret, you. I'm speaking. Okay, well, what about a little... Right, right. Right.
Access to the, these websites.
Oh, the sites?
Oh, it's a...
And where is it? Okay, all right. I'm gonna add this. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I can't go over your question. I do have a...
Father. Or stretch. My dad has one so... Right. Shot. Other shot. No, you start the shot pretty... Where'd you sit it? Take it. Do you deserve to race? Wait, don't try to... You got my damn. You know, I said, "Shut up." Here's the... But you're... When you...
I don't understand.
I'm here. Are you doing something? You did, but you don't run a bar?
But I just started conversation. I'm moving.
My shirt. That was second. My first one.
I'm not saying you don't rely on it. I sure do. All right.
He was something. Yes.
I'm glad you know. I'm glad. I have a slider. Oh, yeah. Happy years to us, my children.
It's good to be fine. You're a warrior. We're... I think you have some...
So, I saw... So, it's a work.
Yeah.
Actually, mine are...
There, yeah. I'm lighting up the machines inside. It's fire. Uh, we were there just a few hours ago. They're probably not right. So, I'm... The fucking change is high. No worries. I'm already, yes, okay. Okay, that was... That's not... Two faces to get that paid. We're doing this. Yeah, come on, come here. So, we didn't need to make it. So, we didn't... They're trying to... Where's he at? I mean, I'm... Well, I can't see that. It's shorty is a little walk. I haven't made any changes.
I said, "I just want to be answered."
Yeah. You know, this one is... Last time I showed you the...
I can barely read.
Yeah. They were doing this around for you. It's like a... Same.
I'm glad you're here. Remember, it's in the scene. Which, yeah, that, that's the...
That was the last.
Oh, please.
I love it. Oh, that's one.
That's for you to trade it. I'm sure the man...
Should we have one?
You guys are... I think you're very... You're checking. All right.
That was, this is your season.
If it's assigned, it's...
I should watch this. Don't you... Don't even say it this way, it's important. She can't...
I'm not, yeah, but I'm, I'm ready to... There's... How are you? This is... Yeah, the end of the night.
I guess I'm gonna... What?
Well, you like... Right. Two seven... Two seven...
Again, report again.
We added it somewhere. No, no, I was... And that's... My character... A whole lot of complexity.
You know, it's so... Get nothing out of it.
With the... Also, you... Why the extra minutes? They're always... They're like... You're... It's... I see some... Position first.
Oh, this is important to do.
Not again. Well, that's it. Right. No, 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 no. I wanna... I also... The problem. I'm just... Yeah. There you go. I'm just... I'm still... I don't need a... I don't need to... I don't... I'm... You still... I'm... Oh, I'm... Oh. Oh, wait, you're... Wait, it's... Yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah. 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 No, it was... Actually, it's coming in nicely. Not with five, um... I didn't... I'm... Where does that... I don't know. I don't know. And... I'm... I'm... I was... Yeah. 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 I'm... Hey, hey. So, I'm... I'm...
We have a new... But I want to... But working for it today. But now we have rivers in the quantity. I don't wanna do it.
Well, if they want to pass it... There's something here. I don't know. I don't know. The lights go. The TV's... I don't know. The TV's... Oh, it's come now? No, the TV's there. What do I know? It's computerized. Is that working?
Okay, so, we finally got a job that night. Grandma's pregnant. She's gonna have a...
You should... It's still in mind, yeah, I'm playing.
Plus... Thank you, Matt.
It's very heavy, right?
Yeah. All right. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I like what I see in order. Actually, if I have a card like New Jersey Sun Channel. Madam Secretary, your vote, please.
Mr. Gilly.
Yeah.
Mr. Halberson.
Yeah.
Mr. Langley.
Yeah.
Mr. Artali. Mr. Rivian. Mr. Inger.
Yeah.
Mr. Wose.
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Here, I see that we have two members, two more members busy. I'll be placing Mr. Gross and Natalie Lou. Now, Ed, 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 please rise, just look at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I, can I have an approval for the minutes of March fourth meeting? A motion by Mr. Halberson. Madam Secretary, can I have a second? Who is that? Mary Gilly, second. Madam Secretary, your vote, please.
Mr. Gilly.
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any correspondence from my scheme?
No.
No, any noble business either? Correct? Madam Secretary, noble business? I wasn't here this long, so... We do have, we have to move forward. No? Okay. Uh, okay, participation carries, right, so we're gonna... Okay, so then we're gonna go into appeal number, appeal number three nine three five eight. Captain Kathan. Okay. This, I believe, is a remand application.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Tom Mayton, in number three nine three five eight, use fairness relief and minus subdivision of Google. The advocate obtained, the advocate obtained use and both fairness relief and minus subdivision of Google by appeal number three nine three five to subdivide an existing one hundred and sixty thousand square foot lot, three point six seven acres property known as lot two, lot two fifty six and lot eleven sixty oh one into two new commercial lots designated as lots two fifty six oh one and two fifty six oh two on subdivision plan. Subsequent to this minus subdivision of Google, the advocate obtained planning board approval to construct the hotel on lot two fifty six point oh two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm the applicant. Uh, the board may recall that the majority of all of you were here approximately two years ago when I came before this board for this application. Uh, this property is, I own it as the car wash on Route seven. Um, that original approval came through zoning board as car washes were not permitted use, um, along that someone along Route seven. That was the reason why we were before this board to begin. Um, we're back before the board, got the approval for the, for the subdivided property that then went on to the planning board as, as was permitted use, uh, then ensuing litigation. Uh, the judge has indicated that to come back before this board, not for a rear approval. However, just for an acknowledgement from the board that you guys understood that there was a shared access and that there was gonna be intensification to the use of, direct to the car wash property. As again, we were cutting off a piece of property that it wasn't being utilized by them. Uh, but there would obviously be some kind of intensification, um, to that original barriers that was granted. Um, if I could ask, this time we're gonna swear in, uh, Ian Borden, and we'll then mark our exhibits and we'll, I'll go from there. I do note that Ron Yaroski is here, who did represent, uh, the objector. Come on, proceed.
Right, and please, Mr. Borden? We're over, over that time, I mean, that's...
I do, thanks.
Uh, Ian, if you can, just tell us if you think it's our, if you're marking.
Uh, certainly, good evening. Good evening.
And, and just before, uh, before, been proposed before many times, he said...
I've seen this picture many times. Uh, I have, I have two exhibits, uh, the one on, on the right, I've made an actual mark, it hasn't been served one. Uh, this is a copy of the five mark subdivision plan that has approved and subsequently filed. I'll explain more when I get my testimony. And on the left is a two, which is a copy of the site plan that's supposed to be presented to the air.
Um, well, that was presented to the... Hotel, if you're back today, when you...
Correct, yes, so again, we came to this board for the subdivision.
Correct.
Under subdivided, we then moved to the planning board for...
Right, right, so to, to reinforce the history of the project, uh, as Frank had summarized, uh, for the three point six seven acre lot, lot eighty fifty six, we had received as approval for a D one bearings to intensify the existing car wash use called the auto spot, that's what its commercial name is. The D one bearings was to place the auto spot on one point eight four acres because we split lot in half and that was according to minus subdivision. As noted, the auto spot was, and still is not permitted use in the D one zone. Maybe go back just for record keeping, the, the auto wa, or the, uh, auto spot pre, originally received the D one bearings approval in April two thousand and three, um, under Resolution thirty three forty six to construct a drive through car wash loop center in D town. That's what's been built, that's what's been there for the past fifteen years. Uh, D five is only not permitted and is not permitted now. So again, looking in two thousand and sixteen to intensify the use onto the one point eight or eight four acre lot, uh, there was no proposed modifications to their site plan improvements, uh, and that remains, uh, the same today. Uh, subsequently, uh, let me just explain on A one, what we have on A one here, which again is the mounted file subdivision plan. The blue is the outline of each tract, eight plot eight fifty six. The orange is the lot line that was created by the following of this map in two thousand and sixteen. The, I did, I did this myself, so pardon me lack of artistic talent. Uh, the shaded, uh, building is shown of the auto spot and then the yellow is the, uh, access drive and then parking spaces. And we had, we had submitted again, and on A two, we had submitted the site plan to the planning board, that was approved, uh, by the lawyers, explaining that then that would be an approval, as I understand, in D nine oh eight court. So, we have been remanded to specifically talk about one particular right of the auto spot, and that is agreeing on A one. On A one, uh, the whole intent of the subdivision, and this was part of our testimony in two thousand and sixteen, but I'll reinforce it tonight, was to any future development of the, the second lot that ultimately is proposed to be the hotel. Uh, did and continues to propose to share the driveway that's located on the auto spot lot, which is the small area market. That is a shared access easement that was included on the approved plans, that is subsequently filed, uh, and that occupies one hundred thirty, one point oh three acres. It is an argument that the, the purpose of agreement, as I understand it, is to discuss the intensification of the car wash lot as created by that shared access driveway. Uh, to my opinion, that we did discuss that in two thousand and sixteen, but be that as it may, I think it's appropriate that we put more planning testimony on the record today to just make sure that we have fully addressed that issue. Uh, in, in my opinion, again, the shared driveway being point oh three acres, that then intensifies the car wash on the one point, could be considered to intensify the car wash on the one point eight four acres that we got approved for the lot by additional terms, an acre or down to one point eight one acres, that's the way I'm personally looking at it from an empirical, uh, perspective. Uh, while it could be, uh, being, in my opinion, within the expansion of the non-performing use, uh, my intent is to write D one, uh, bearing such testimony for that intensification. Uh, should be noted that as part of this, uh, as, as part of this, uh, shared use of the driveway, there is a curve that runs, uh, on the western side along the edge of our proposed lot. There is a portion of that, uh, curve, fifty feet, approximately, that needs to be removed, potentially that curve would be removed from the, uh, auto spot property. I think it's appropriate to put on the record that, that we are going to disturb this at that lot. In my opinion, it's not worthy of amendment site plan for the car wash property and, uh, should, should, this is how people should the board, uh, rank, uh, the D one bearings for the intensification of use of the driveway, I hope that people could also see very clear to grant the waiver cycling for that. I hope that people could also see very clear to grant the waiver cycling for that pool over that short piece of curve. There's no disturbance to the Auto Spa, again, no disturbance to the parking or for drivers. One of the cases that we looked at also in preparing for this, again, understanding the situation we're in, is that there is a court case that I always have to look at by my team, and that is the Knuckle versus Florida Book Fairing case of Supreme Court, 2011, I don't know if any of the board members have ever heard of that. But that was a case that related exactly to an intensification of the driveway for a hotel use, interestingly enough. And one of the arguments made there was that the share of the driveway potentially serves as a second principal use. Because if you put, if I put a driveway on somebody else's property, that property on somebody else's property, making a second use. In this case, however, and given late attached ordinances which differ from little fairy ordinances, I don't believe that to be the case. Because the V5 ordinance doesn't limit use to only one principal use, nor does the definition of lot in the late ordinance make reference to a principal use. In other words, the little fairy ordinance, in that case, talked about the lot having one principal use. The late ordinance does not have that same language. I just want to make sure the records cleared, in my opinion, having that shared driveway on the neighboring lot, the car wash lot, the Auto Spa lot, is not an additional principal use. It's simply the sharing of the driveway, intensification of the use, D1 standards of law. And obviously, whatever happens with our variance tonight, the hotel site plan wouldn't need to be resubmitted to the planning board, that has to stand on its own merits. Why simply bring the hotel site plan to illustrate what the use is on the lot next door? I believe that was specifically mentioned in the objective of some planning testimony that they felt it was a escaped award as to what was proposed on the joint law. So what we have here is we have the V5 highway business zone. As we know, the V5 zone allows office buildings, retail stores, restaurants, and other non-residential uses to hold various forms of residential development. In our case, the property is surrounded by V5 zones on either side of Route 70, with M1 industrial zoning located to preserve the site along Airport Road. The area to the east of the site is unbelted, which is the top of Lot A1. The area to the bottom of Lot A1, adjoining the new lot, the hotel lot, is occupied by an office complex located on Route 70 and Airport Road. Across Route 70 also on the V5 zone are hotel, service station, retail shops, and offices. And that's relevant because when we look at the 2017 master plan, and again, I'm speaking of the Auto Spa use. It contains the following goals of objectives in the land use settlement. Number two is to create a balanced and compatible arrangement of residential business and industrial land uses, and minimize land use conflicts. I think that's particularly important. Number four, encourage future residential and non-residential growth in coordinated and managed manners. Number five, amend zoning ordinance when necessary to improve and enhance the intended purposes of the zone district and clarify the permitted uses and development standards. Number six, encourage future growth and development of the township's variable base, in accordance with the smart growth plan. Number seven, encourage the redevelopment of the existing underutilized lots. Number eight, discourage deviations from existing established land use patterns of permitting incompatible and conflicting land uses being developed adjacent to one another. And number nine, discourage the destruction of new residential development fronting state counties major roadways. And I mention all those because in my opinion, the Auto Spa as a commercial use not permitted in the V5 zone is a complementary commercial use substantially compatible with each of those statements in the land use zone. Thereby enhancing the purpose of the V5 zone district. Intensifying the Auto Spa onto the new lot, the 1.84, also subtracting out the 300s for the shared driveway further, allows development on a underutilized site and roads of the township variable base. The future development, or the future development of the hotel will be commercial development amongst the highway and county tourist by the land use. So what we are putting on the record is the D1 variance, a use of principal structure in the district restricted against subdivision, particularly as a waste of intensification created by this shared driveway. And in my opinion, we meet the purposes of zoning, under A, to encourage in this lack of backup, private user development, under G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses. And furthermore, now talking about the site and how it related to these purposes of zoning, obviously, what we are seeking here is the general welfare or particular suitability, which means that it's not required to demonstrate that the site cannot be used for these purposes, but that it is particularly suitable to this site. And in this case, the Auto Spa, I think what's important to understand is as a relatively, in my opinion, non-intense use, existing use obviously been there for 15 years or so. Being located on a less than likely, a small 1.81 acres, when you consider the shared access driveway, is particularly well suited. And it's well suited because it's located with direct access on Route 70, in a commercial zone, being a commercial use. The Auto Spa generates less traffic than any other commercial uses that are permitted in the zone. And I think most importantly, the Auto Spa easily complies with the coverage requirements on the smaller lot, even when you include the enhanced driveway. For example, the V5 zone allows 30% building coverage on the less than lot area. The Auto Spa has building coverage of only 12%, so much less than half. And then, and again, on the previous coverage, we're permitted 90%, we are proposing 69% on the less than area. The existing driveway out, lastly, is very well suited to the proposed less than area under, as I say, that there's no changes to the existing site approvals requirement. In fact, when one looks at, obviously, this site is developed in accordance with that 2003 site plan that I noted, which, in my opinion, always considered the future use of the joint property. So I think we're accomplishing that as well. Quickly, during the negative criteria, in my opinion, the proposed use can be approved and that the the intensification through the director, again, without substantial detriment to the public good, again, because it does not generate substantive traffic. Certainly, traffic is not, from the Auto Spa, is not, there's no additional traffic. Certainly, there's more traffic than the hotel, that will be utilizing that 1.03 acre shared portion of the driveway. And as I said, the site has much less building in the previous area than permitted. So in my opinion, the Rose Spa is a commercial use substantially consistent with the intended purpose of the master plan. And as a result, intensification of the Rose Spa, including additional intensification for the shared access easement will not substantially bear the intended purpose of the master.
I just have, I just have two questions or comments, and one on the record, and one on the record, attorney. Does county approve this subdivision, correct?
Yes.
And did the county have an issue with the shared driveway?
No, we, all appropriations were subdivision and Auto Spa, I mean, the lots exist.
Right.
The map was filed in 2016.
That's her moment.
The county's having more than.
So with this information, I'm gonna try to have attorney, can you help me explain to him why the remand is over here exactly yet? We have a county approval, we have statute of approval. It says, it clearly says in the resolution, under paragraph, well, this is no paragraph from the year of the resolution, but if there is, one, paragraph one B, whatever, on page three, letter, letter F, letter F. Upon finding the subdivision map, the applicant will be allowed to apply to the planning board for a site, for a site on proof provided that the application is permitted use of the V5 zone, and the application has complied with all requirements of that zone. So whatever it is tonight, he's complying with the paragraph of our resolution back in 2016.
Mr. Chairman, the number one to court was a stipulation of settlement. And it's noted in the engineer's review letter, the specific reason why it was remanded back to this board. My understanding is the board to articulate in the resolution that you did examine whether there would be an intensification on the car wash as a result of the access easement, and whether that resulted in adverse impact on both the car wash and the hotel.
As well as reduction of property.
Yes.
So if you order from the judge, do you want to read it, because it's.
Yeah, I want to read it, but I'm gonna give you a statement. So the planning board approved it, right? So is it our responsibility to decide if it had adverse effect? Or is it the planning board's responsibility? They're the ones that approved it.
It's remanded to the zoning board, it's remanded to this board.
I said, well, we didn't approve the, we didn't approve the hotel. So we didn't see the application.
No, this was one subdivision and the use variance, that's why it's here. Chairman, by that, I'm.
I remember.
And frankly, there's one question, I think.
Yeah.
Was before you, is that the hotel, and hotels also go back before the board for other reasons, for the planning board?
Okay.
This application is, the original application was to subdivide and take off the bottom part of that property and to allow for the access easement. The intensification isn't of that hotel or any other properties put on to this subdivision piece. It's known that since we're taking off the lower half of the property, is that intensification, automatically, right? You take off this property, even though it's wood, or sort of the time. There's gonna be intensification to the car wash.
How do you feel, is it accomplished? You tell me you make a left turn on the car, and bring away the hotel?
Do you agree? And that's, that's what we, we testified to originally. The judge wanted to hear from the board specifically, if you understood that, one, the shared access driveway was going to be a very, very huge change, and it has on the property, will be an intensification to the car wash property, and as long as you're taking away a piece of repair, then there'll be another intensification to it.
Simply on a smaller piece of property, or what?
Yeah, well, as long as it complies with paragraph F, and there is no other use variance required, right? And the traffic flow works, then I don't see where there should be an intensification on property. You know, that.
And that's why we're.
I'm gonna wrap it up.
That's what we're looking. That's why we're gonna have the board to put that on the record. If that's the direction that the board is going, to have specific findings of fact that can be put in a resolution.
Well, I can't tell you about the hotel's traffic pattern because we haven't seen that.
Right.
I can tell you, as far as the, the car wash, which we did approve, you come into the driveway, you make a right turn into the car wash, you're done, 50 feet in.
And that's what the board has to say, and it does that reduce the area because of the size of the easement creating an intensification of the car wash use, and it's a detrimental.
And can you pass me the hotel site plan?
Yeah, this has to go back to board plan, the hotel application has to go back to the plan.
That's only provided for, provided for information.
It's intense.
That's only provided for information.
I'm wondering, look at this driveway, how it's gonna work coming in and out of the driveway. Which is actually what I envisioned. Look, there you go, you're coming into the driveway, you're making a left turn into the hotel property, you're making a right turn into the, into the spa, into the car wash. And, and you're done.
Looks like.
This is 50 feet out, enough room here, or 100 feet, 162 feet, sorry. Enough room across the stack, and you get out on 70, so you're not creating a problem. Although that proper control signal, stop sign, is a little bit obscure.
From our perspective, nothing has changed from what we presented in 2016. What's changed is we have an objection plan, or maybe the argument that the record needs to reflect that intensification, particularly created by the property.
Okay, okay. Okay. And before I open, why you, because this is asking him to come up, because he's the objector of the hearing here, correct? And I missed the last one, so. I don't want to bump those, to be honest, huh? But I want to agree. Is anyone else having anything to say? Can I go for anyone?
Mr. Chairman, the only, the only question I have is, what are we, what do we think we're deciding on? That, yes, we intensify?
Yes, we deciding if that's the direction the board is going, is a question of, would you make a finding of fact confirming that the intensification, so it's not that adverse impact on the.
I mean, basically, it's like saying, the judge sending you back was like saying, guys, did you really realize this is gonna be happening for us?
Well, the objector made that point, and the judge felt that maybe the board should revisit it and put it in writing in a resolution that that is something that you examined, and that's your decision.
Well, this is, this is on my paragraph F, it's going to be compliable, it's only a ordinance. I think that's what these varies are, you put up with every one of them. That's a paragraph success.
The judge wanted to clarify.
Okay. Let's see what on.
Chairman, if you'd like to say, I'm trying to clarify, clarify. So, the only reason why this is coming before the board, it's not every time you give somebody even access to your driveway, you shut shut. It's only because the original use of the car wash is not permitted use and is inherent.
Well, you're expanding on the non-performing use because the lot is smaller now, they brought that smaller.
It's actually the testification of the non-performing.
But the original wasn't per forming use. If you would have been at the planning board, right, if, if the zone had permitted car washes 15 years ago, we would not have been before this board ever, we would have been right before the planning board, assuming that was other required. So just to make it more narrow, what we're doing is we're trying to clarify our prior grant of permitted use of of the non-performing use of the car wash, to the car wash with a shared driveway.
Yeah, the testification of the, of the. All right, one last point, the only reason this came up is because there was an objection of the judge. Well, that's correct, it went into litigation. And the judge said, go back to the board. Yes. To see. Correct. All right. And the objector is?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, Ryan Yaroski.
What's your name again?
Judge Yaroski.
All right.
With a hi, not with a hi.
With a hi, okay.
Chairman, I understand.
Okay, nothing to thank you. Ryan, who's your client, by the way?
My client is hotels, unlimited, not private, and it's in the township. My thing about that, I already disclosed that they're the areas.
Correct.
They are in fact owners of a hotel as well, that was brought up before this board years ago. Also disclosed to the security for justice, which was not probably exposed. So there's no mystery here.
Right, so a competing hotel.
What?
A competing hotel in there? Competition?
Competition, I guess perhaps within the area of use. I'm gonna just clarify one thing, because we seem to be, there's some lack of clarity with regard to whether or not there is an approval for a hotel on this adjacent property, which is adjacent to the car wash. I don't believe there is an existing site plan approval for the hotel.
Do you agree with that? 100%. There is no approval, there was, it was a field, or whatever, that we have to mitigate. We will have to go back before the planning board for a new application for cycling.
Okay, fine.
Site plan or use?
Well, I think what happened is, what happens, Ryan, is that initially, I think when the hotel was first approved, we established the fact that in your zoning ordinance, it was not listed as a permitted use. So what happened was, we went to court, and we agreed that they would pass the new ordinance placing the hotel in their zone. I agreed that so long as they did it procedurally correct, I would not oppose that ordinance, which I would not oppose. So now, we're back before this board pursuant to an agreement wherein the parties will agree that they come back before you for a subdivision, and they're gonna present testimony presumably with regard to the intensification of the driveway.
Ryan, you have very clear, very uncles slow time. There was no approval on this hotel, on this second piece as we're speaking now, correct? Is that what you're saying?
There was an approval.
That was today. April 8, 2019, there was no approval on it. April 8, 2019, does the zoning ordinance allow a hotel on this piece?
It does.
Okay, so now it's done from scratch. No approval, hotel's allowed, the applicant is going back to the planning board at a future date to get some approval.
If he could show they have jurisdiction.
If they can show they have jurisdiction, as opposed to.
I mean, there's violations to that, but that will force that.
Okay, I just want to get, I just want to get straight, okay.
So, one problem which I have in regard to this application which is before you now, what you're being told upon is to make a determination as to whether or not the location of this one driveway on the lot from the car wash is an intensification of the use of that driveway, thus an intensification of the use of the car wash lot. Now, you don't have a site plan, you don't have a site plan to demonstrate the size of the hotel, the number of rooms of the hotel, the number of rooms of the hotel will determine whether or not, how many cars will be coming on in off this site, co-mingling with the traffic from the car wash. We don't know whether or not this hotel will have a liquor license or a restaurant, once again, thus increasing that you sell the hotel property, you just simply don't know that. And I would respectfully submit to you, you can't make that determination until you're told what it is. There's been no testimony, and by the way, now I've known Mr. Gordon as well as his colleagues in the years, a, you know, cordial relationship, Mr. Gordon has given you no testimony with regard to that, nor in fact, a CBA traffic consultant or a traffic expert, he's a very fine planner, and his testimony, as he presented to you, was trivial, I just don't think it was sufficient. I don't think he covered the things that he would have to cover in order for you to make a determination as to whether or not this driveway, as it's presently situated on the car wash lot, is a sufficient size with the traffic patterns are such that it can accommodate each to each.
My question to you is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what do you want, what do you want? A bigger driveway?
I don't know that you need a bigger driveway.
You don't want a driveway for the parking?
No, actually, it may very well be, and I don't wish to sound disrespectful, it may very well be that there should be a separate driveway on the lot which contains the hotel. Why is there one driveway?
Money? When the application.
They have all approvals.
So, when the application for the hotel comes to the table, at that time, they'll pull that back.
I hate the subject today.
But the burden which is upon you this evening is whether or not this applicant presented sufficient testimony to you.
Okay, I hear, can I ask you another question? Last time we gave the approval of splitting up this paragraph, this property, and clearly states in our resolution that so long the property is, fits in the zone, doesn't require any zoning variances.
It doesn't require it, it doesn't require.
I don't know if we've got the answers, I don't see a hotel.
It's a undersized lot, the hotel lot's an undersized lot. The hotel lot does not have, I don't think it has sufficient properties, the hotel lot doesn't have.
No, because when we, when we gave it a definite approval, let's read the record together, did you see it? Upon the filed subdivision map, wait, 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 Ryan, upon filed subdivision map, applicant will be allowed to apply to the planning board for this site plan approval, to the planning board for site plan approval, provided that the application has permitted the use of the defined zone, which our hotel is, okay? And that the application has applied the full requirements for that zone. So, it means that we totally, whatever he has to put in on that piece of property, now, if you want me to tell, wait, let me try, let me try to go, Ryan, so if you want to tell me that I should analyze so long that it doesn't intensify the use of that property? Hey, I can do that, but is it clear? Do you disagree with me, Mr. Lawyer?
Yes, I agree. Again, we should be limiting the discussion and the words we use tonight in terms of the specific language from the judge's order, rather than continue talking about the hotel, but hotels will be a dirty picture.
We love this, Jim. Would it be a difference on the intensity of the use on the car wash property, is it that the size of the hotel, was 25 units, 50 units, 75 units, or 100 units? And the answer obviously is yes. We don't know, you don't know, as this board sits here this evening, how many units they intend to place on the hotel property. How can you make a determination with regard to?
So, the same time, I can't tell you today that I can't allow a hotel to come in over there. I believe that a hotel should come, present its case, and then they'll decide if it's an intensified use or not in solo map, I hope you know a hotel should present, move forward and present the application.
Of course, at the beginning, Mr. Gordon, you used to determine whether or not the use of the driveway is being intensified or not, once again, how do you know that?
A- a- as of now, I don't see that the driveway is intensified.
I know my witness, because I understand the difficulty of asking that, and I'll say that.
Just to get clear again, we are voting in favor on intensification of a driveway to the car wash, is that correct?
I think not, yeah.
Why, if there's no approval for a hotel, why are we even listening about hotels? When they come back, is it about the use of the hotel?
Well, no, the hotel is now permitted use, so that's the point.
I mean, in theory, if a hotel would come, wouldn't it be? But when something comes, we'll worry about that, is that correct? No.
Okay.
No, it's called, when they, when we see what's in front of us, and it says the driveway's not big enough, we'll tell them they got to use something.
Then they're not going to, you're certainly going to the planning board.
Then the planning board will take care of it.
Can we put some language in there that when, if a hotel goes from the planning board, that they should take a really good look?
You just put it this way, yeah, we get the rule, this is what we're going to intensify these, and at that time, it's going to work out. Okay, and let's see what your, what your witness has to say.
I have, Gordon, Gemma, G E M M A, 68, Seneca Place, Ocean floor, Virginia.
Okay, can you tell me who your, who your witnesses are?
If you could pay attention, you would. I have this question, I have it as such for.
I don't know.
Okay, so you know what you feel?
I have it. Let me, let me get a second. I think you're right, you've got to ask, and this is asked, why are we here? Here's a remand from the court. A remand from the court said, we're taking a look at the issue of intensification. Now, when it came to the intensification, you actually have a letter from your engineer, and your letter from your engineer tells you what to look at. That's the March 25, 2018, to the 18 letter from Mary Converton. And it says, look at this, it says, testimony should be provided by the accounting professionals in support of these variants reconsideration, including intensification impacts to the car wash resulting from the proposed shared driveway access between the existing car wash and the approved hotel. Now, that's the problem, and that's what we're wrestling with right now. That's the problem, and that's what we're wrestling with right now, because the issue would be, under your premise, the hotel should go to the planning board, which that's what we're expecting, would be that creates a bit of an issue. And the bit of an issue is, if the hotel goes to the planning board, and it's a big hotel, and there is an intensification of use, that application doesn't belong in front of the planning board. Only this board can give what's called a D2 variance. The variance looking up tonight, that the applicant noticed for, is actually a D2 expansion of a non-conforming use. The non-conforming was, was approved in 2003. And so, we have to look at and say, I'm looking at the facts as to whether this use is being intensified by two things. Thing number one, it's on a lot smaller than otherwise existing within the zone, it's 1.84 acres for both lots, and so, you're 100% correct. If your resolution of approval says it has to totally comply with the ordinance, then it shouldn't be in front of the planning board, it should be back here. And the problem that puts you in, the heart of the issue, is you're being asked to judge an intensification of a use. You have no idea what use is going to be, you have no idea how it's going to generate, you have no idea where it's going to generate. I don't know how you can do it, it's not fair to ask this board to do that.
On that note, on that note.
Go ahead.
When we approve this property, they want us to split the property, right? So, we split the property so long, we bring in something else that doesn't require any special variances in the planning board.
Correct, by virtue of your splitting property, I understand you're saying, by virtue of your splitting the property and making a non-conforming use on both, on the undersized lot on both sides, well, both sides are 1.84 acres, by the very nature of that, and the language you just read to me in your resolution, he has to seek a variance for an undersized lot, and it's back in front of the board.
Not necessarily, I'll argue with that.
Okay.
I would love to hear this one. Because, anyway, when we, when we determined that, we gave permission to go to the planning board and created that second undersized lot as such, that it can build anything that you like to, so long it doesn't require any further variances besides and outside of the goal point for acres.
So, just so you're clear, what we're saying, so what we're saying is this, and I acknowledge, and I gave them an undersized lot.
Correct.
And as long as they don't go for anything else, then they don't need to come back to this board, even though I acknowledge it's an undersized lot.
Oh, we have to acknowledge, we gave.
You gave it to them, you could have just said, look, make a car wash on a small one, and a hotel on a big one, you gave them to, you gave them to undersized lots, okay? You gave them to undersized lots, but I'll proffer to you, in the language you read, it doesn't quite say that. The language you read, the language you read said, it says to me, that this board's trying to keep this jurisdiction, regardless of the language of that, that I understand, probably you have today, so the judge, who said, you've got to, you have to make, the order says, make a determination as to whether in fact this lot, this undersized, this car wash is being intensified. Your engineer says, there better be testimony about traffic, about this undersized lot, about this car wash, but you can't, there's no testimony about traffic. In fact, in 2016, when you gave the approval, and Mr. Gordon spoke, I led the resolution, and in 2016, you know what Mary Converton sent in 2016? It said in its June 9, 2016 letter to this board, it said that there has to be testimony as to the adequacy of access for the hotel and the water spa. It said that you need testimony to see whether you were increasing an intensified use. Ian did a good job today of talking about the positives and negatives, Ian did a good job of talking about the purpose of zoning. I proffer, though, the intent of Judge Ford's order is for you to make a determination is an intensified use, and the answer is, you are 100% correct, and repeat that on the record, you can't, and you can't, because you don't know what's there on the hotel lot. You know what's on the hotel lot because it's not approved, and that's the problem that you're, this board is, and normally this board, I've been a part of this board a while now, if this was an issue about intensification of use, you would ask questions about traffic generation, queuing, PM and P's, making conflicting movements, all the things that this board normally generates before, all the things that you would normally ask any traffic expert to come in front of you. You can't. So, I proffer, as a player, I'm not as smart as Mr. Gordon, I can't make a determination that this is being intensified, you can't either, because you don't know, that how do you comply with it, with the order that was put in front of you by a judge? What's going to happen, right, over, is that if you decide it's not intensified, because a hotel is intensified, that's nice, you know what's going to happen? We'll be backed through you from now. What is the solution? There's a simpler solution to all of this, and the simplest solution is, come back in front of this board with a hotel use, that this board has jurisdiction, have the hotel use, and have the ability to go for the hotel, as well as D2 variance if it's needed. Under the Raspberry case, which is the case about intensification, the board made the determination, the court makes the determination, and the issue of intensification is an issue of fact in law. In fact, under the Raspberry case, Judge Skelman writes that just by mere shrinking of the lot is enough to be an intensification. He talks about buffers. Ian made a point, there's not a buffer suggested here, there's no change, and no site plan on a, on a car wash, but the point that has, you can't.
On application on the car wash.
And the point is, you can't make a determination about intensity, then what are you doing?
So, let me back for a second, okay? We can make a determination, we can have, like you said, that we can approve this split of the car wash, right? And, and this agree with me, please, please just let me know, and you also, you thought it, we can, we can basically go ahead and say that this split of the property is okay, and I believe that's where Judge Ford is going.
No, I think.
That so long, when we split this property, right, it doesn't require any further zone variance requirement, and it doesn't satisfy the traffic on it, it will, shall go to the planning board.
Well, remember, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Let me explain the problem.
That's what the judge wants to hear.
You said so long as it doesn't, this is, this is a problem, so long as it doesn't satisfy the traffic. The problem is, is we're making a determination, we're trying to make a determination that this doesn't intensify the traffic.
We can't.
So, then we can't do it, that's it.
No, no, that's the next board, I'll argue, but the next board, figure out, even if that's why.
But how can the next board to the planning board, we're not going to look at, we're going to look at the use.
No.
We can't tell them to look at something that was. Well, Mr. Houston, the point is, I'm, I'm trying to say, but you go to your point, sir, not only, you're putting up to the planning board an issue of determination of the intensity of the, of the non-conforming use, not the jurisdiction, planning boards can't hear D2 variances, not only, maybe they can't, it's not within what they can do. The only board that has the right to hear a D2 variance is you, and the only way you can properly hear it is that you know what's going on on that slot, because otherwise you're just going to make any guess, and I don't think the court wants you to make a guess, and it's unfair to ask it.
Mr. Chair.
I think I'm going to turn to my attorney for a moment to help us out, but before I turn, before I say anything, I think I'll be one of those.
I have a quick question. You keep saying that it wasn't approved, but from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, there was an approval for a hotel there by planning already, and there was an approval by, for a hotel there by the company, and then the judge was going to decide that approvals were no good because of this party's suggestion.
You can't undo, you can't undo the approval.
We didn't take it from any of the parties, the captain's ordinance, the captain is just, Ryan, you know, tell me I'm wrong, Terry also, the result, the ordinance permitted hotels, it was an oversight that didn't allow hotels, I mean, I don't want to attach that for hotels, there's a hotel, and everyone with the idea that hotels were permitted. After the fact, after it was approved, over the whole process here, they went to county and everybody, Ron followed the deal, one of the issues he raised was hotels were not permitted use in the zone, and that's the reason why it opened the start of the whole thing. I said hotels and hotels, you know, I mean, I followed up on other issues, but that, but it was a main issue, that the, that, again, that hotels were not from the zone, permitted the zone.
But hotels were.
Hotels were, and there was a lot of back and forth, the township went back, to put it back into the zone, it was an oversight, but they wrote the ordinance 90 years ago.
Okay, but Terry, they put that back, they.
My understanding is that the ordinance was amended, and now we couldn't.
Correct. You could have just backed then, asked the variance to go over on that property when you were before us. Yeah, it was our understanding, though, again, that hotels were permitted. Every, everybody. You used the MNAH to have pulled up, um, not, not just walk into a hotel, but I need to, but have you gone back then, that's the problem, the problem is, have you gone back then and said, with a nice application, here's the car wash, here's the hotel, here's a shared driveway, then, 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 then our zoning, then the resolution back then would have been, would have been difficult for everything. Problem is, is that back then, we were talking about the hotel because we predicted it had come to us as well as before us, right, at all, because. We all live on the assumption of the planning. It's because of this, this we go here, that we're stuck in this situation where that narrow, this narrow issue, you know, has to be resolved. Can I, can I just read, we haven't read the actual words, but the judge's order.
Go ahead.
Again, I'm just reading, I'm interested. Subdivision approval, this is simply a practice, the judge's. Subdivision approval is remanded to the zoning board for review of the filed subdivision map and board authorization resolution to allow the board to articulate whether the approved, granted approval intensified the use of the certain lot, which includes the variance for the shared access easement. Said remand shall be conducted pursuant to MLHE rule. So, again, for that people's board, just to ask the board if they understood that when they split.
that when they split the, split the property now, that they have one, intensified the property due to reducing a three points on acre property down to one points on acre property, that's one. And two, there is a shared access. Now, there is one motel, ten year hotel, or not even a hotel, to something else. There will be, as the council tells, that there was a, that there would be an intensification of a shared roadway and of the car. That's it.
You don't want more of this shared. I mean.
If, if, if they, if they have to come back in front of the board anyways, and, and they're, they're saying that there really is no current approvals now, even though there were or anything. Why, why can't we just say, come back to us instead of the wine? And we'll decide.
We heard the resolution that it was intensified and so it doesn't require.
But they're, but they're going to require it too. Yeah, they still need a variance.
No.
Okay.
Now. We, we approve the decision, but you don't, after you don't wish to mark the entity, you're still on that on the lot. You just not know what it would be, you still don't know what it would be. But I think the judge is asking us to review what our approval was. We know what our approval was. I don't see what.
That's what I say, Ford. I told her, Allison.
What you're going to do is, the language you're saying is that you're not, you're supposed to be seeing this, um, anew. You're supposed to just go back in the memory and decide whether we consider it, whether our approval approved the, the intensification. That's what we read. So should I, should I ask a question to our attorneys? If what we're trying to do is go back and remember what we approved at board, then only those of zoning members that were on that original resolution should be able to.
Right. Okay.
Am I right?
That's a good point.
Good analysis.
All right.
Very good. Can I, can I speak, Charles?
Great. Okay. Uh, do you have some of this other?
Yes.
Okay.
I can run it to you.
Yes, please do.
Uh, and I don't know, you know, it's been a very, many, many years. We've all sometimes been speaking, I don't fully love to speak example. When this harbor was first approved through a corporation, which was many, many, many years ago, there's a continent, either in the resolution or in the minutes or wherever it may be, where the component of the board room was, uh, well, thankfully it's a car wash, not a hotel. And whenever I go back to my office, I will find that in whose entities, because I know it's there. So if at that time, that was a concern, how can you be here this evening?
2016.
I can't say, I can't. Anything that came to ratables on this board. Correct. Anything that came with brass and ratable, we approve. Correct. That's what I know. Ratable. Can I open up public appeal number 3935? If anyone wants to be here, please step up.
Raise your hand, please. If you were referring to the testimony that you was. And you were, uh, name next. Shloem McLean.
And 189 should go, right?
The name is?
Shloem McLean. Um, first of all, I want to say is that some members of the board, the mic doesn't work. You have to put it on, you have to make a push, the green light has to be on. Just the.
It's working, right?
Okay, but when I mentioned it before, you kicked me over the days. It's your right to do it, you're the big boss chairman, but it was still not working. So the mic was not picking up on the live stream. She will have a proud match who is listening to it, and so on. Um, I, it seems like everybody agrees. It seems like everybody agrees that technically they could have come to this board now with an approval for a car wash and a hotel, and you would have had jurisdiction to have approved it. That's what everybody claimed over here. They, the question that I have is, why are they so afraid to come to this board for the hotel? You give them a harder time than the planning board? Why are they so afraid of you? Something is wrong. Why they're looking to split and just do the hotel by the planning board? It's a compliment to you, maybe it's not a compliment, it's negative to the developer or the public. I don't know how it works, but something like, and say it in English, stinks. Now, I have a question for, there's two planners over here, so let's go first to the. Are you asking for a waiver of sidewalks on this application? The question is, if the judge told you to come back to this board just for the intensification purposes, what it does, or any waivers that you originally gave by this board or this application, you have to ask for it again. So my question is, on this, um, application, are you asking for a waiver of sidewalks? So is the sidewalks over there, or you're not asking for it?
Not asking for it.
So the thing is, my understanding is there's no sidewalks. And therefore is, because obviously you gave it the previous time, that this board, I must say, is, is very not good when it comes to sidewalks, look around Lakewood. And as recently as the planning board is making sure that they don't give waivers. This board is, for whatever reason, I don't know. And it seems like the original application, when they came to subdivide, they had to ask for a waiver of sidewalks. Was there an existing car wash? Anytime in Lakewood, when you subdivide a lot, when you subdivide a property, or you build a thousand square feet building on it, you're requiring to put in sidewalks and curbs. But I'm talking about sidewalks. And the mayor of this town was very specific is that it should be even in industrial zone, should be sidewalks. The planning board now requires every applicant, even an industrial park, to put in sidewalks. We know people are getting killed over there, root safety in that corner. If you come to say is that we're not putting in sidewalks. Oops, bad. Now I have a few questions. Um.
Fifty seconds left.
No, cross examination is nothing to do with the time of. What?
Nothing.
I do cross examination, and I'll make it short, out of respect to the chairman. Um, in your understanding, this ruling. Does that, I'm asking this, they go over here.
Mr. Ford is his name, France Eagles for Gudowski and Sheehan.
Well.
He's on the turf, so what's the question?
Well, I just asked your professional, I was pointing to him, and you look like you're trying to intimidate. You should learn by now is I don't get so easily intimidated.
I'm intimidated.
So please relax. Like the sugar pills, and relax, and let me ask the professional the question.
Let me, pause, sir, keep on going.
Okay. Question that I have for you, Mr. Professional. Could you technically come to this board for approval for the hotel and the car wash as of today? Thank you very much.
That was easy.
Thank you. Anyone else on the bottom, want to be heard? Seeing none, closer to the public. Just as a comment on about this topic that was just discussed, we are not here to rework the approval that was given. We're just here tonight to, uh, uh, for remand. If it's an intensification or not, the approvals with and how it stays as is. That will be here for tonight.
May I please call back Mr. Ford?
Please do.
Address some of Mr. Jones's comments. Mr. Ford, you heard the testimony of Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Just try and just.
Absolutely. First of all, not being an attorney, I will say that what I hear from Mr. Gavrasky is what he accuses us of every other day, which is forum shop.
Which is what?
Forum shop. If you're in front of the zoning board, you belong in front of the planning board. If you're in front of the planning board, you belong in front of the zoning board. That's the game, you know that, that's what he does. I will read a paragraph from his own planner's expert who's not here. He presented to the court a planning.
And represents this application.
It's, it's deep report, it created the remand. He hired a planner called Peter Statie. He wrote a planner report. Uh, today is. Day of April 3, 2018. Peter Statie PP, artist number 1776. And his summary of planning conclusions are that the introduction of new traffic from the vacant lot 25.0, 256.02 on car wash, which is the hotel lot. On the car wash lot 256.01 constitutes an intensification of the non-conforming car wash use. Triggers a devariance necessitating verification by the board adjustment. The language is, the introduction of new traffic, not, is it 10, is it 20, is it 30? You know, they're arguing that, that we, they want all the hotel testimony, which I can give you if you want, I don't think you want, I'm happy with. I have it all written right here. I can tell you how many rooms and how many parking spaces and what IP manuals.
I have no paper.
I have the internet. But his own planner report doesn't say necessarily to understand the, the intensity of that use on the hotel lot is the introduction of new traffic. That's, my argument is, that's a meaningless, uh, uh, expansion. Understanding that, again, we're talking about a broadway, shared roadway, 1200 square feet. It's not 30 feet. However, the broadway into the car wash is hundreds of feet long. We're sharing 30 feet, not 62 feet. That's just in the right way.
Plus, plus 50.
Right. So, uh, I, I think that's, that's, that's important. And as far as the, uh, just as a matter of record, uh, what, what does the board decide as we refer? But as far as the hotel site plan on the new lot 256.02, it was argued by Mr. Jones that, that the fact that that lot is undersized triggers the zone board. That is simply not true, in my opinion, because that is not a hotel as a permitting incentive. A lot that is undersized is simply a C1 or C2 variance, if not a D1. Okay. Um.
I want you to cross the pen.
Go ahead.
I.
Is that?
He doesn't let me cross the pen.
I'll let. Yeah.
Can you, they, Shwane, and Terry, and, and the attorney, in your opinion, is this something we can vote on?
If you've gotten all the testimony exhibits, uh, we've had it given tonight, and we'll make a, a decision on it, and then, yes.
I want to take that, this, this question a, a little further. And I want to understand what the judge, were you in the courtroom with the judge, or was Terry, was Terry was there? Terry, were you in the courtroom? You weren't there either. I, I just want to.
The prepper, you know, uh.
Will that, will this, what, what, understand?
It's a party, it's a consent board.
Okay. What are we, excuse me, we're going in here. I heard, I heard a lot of hooligans around tonight, a lot of this. Okay? We are here tonight reaffirming our initial, our first, um, um, um.
Not reaffirming.
Correct.
Realize.
That's, that is, that's a reason, that's why I'm trying to, attorney, to, for, for, for answer. Um, are we, are we looking at this, um, um, as a new, um, approval on the old application? Or are we just re-examining that, and we're just adjusting that application without, and it's anything to do with what's coming? Or do we have to make consideration about what's coming? Do you accept my question? All right.
I do, I'm, I'm just, uh, again, we, the, uh, line from stipulation assembly again, and that's the direction to the board, uh, what they have to grant, and so for any granted approval. So the question of the board reviewing what's been granted and the issue of the intensification of the use of the car wash lot, uh, as it relates to the shared access easement. My understanding, what the board is directed to do is solely limited to discussion on that issue alone. Not discussing a hotel use, or discussing.
That's where I want to go.
In other words, historical question of what we did in the past.
Correct.
Are we realizing that it is an intensification? Yes. Controversial. No, did we realize that? Didn't realize that. That it is.
And we testify, I'll give a motion, and let's.
I make a motion to. You've had, you've done.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to.
I have a question.
Get up, Roy.
Mr. Ford spoke once again.
They talk in the lines.
Mr. Ford came back and testified in regard to, uh, a report that was prepared by my planner. And as I listened to him, I didn't quite understand his point. I would like to see where in Mr. Steph's report he was referring to.
So go ahead.
He, he.
Praxis, get it done.
I can't help you, Roy.
You can help, it's all what we say, it's all about.
Yeah, no, listen, it's all practical, the judge is asking for capital.
I would like to make a motion to acknowledge that we realize now our previous application of intensification of the driveway into the parking, what, a car wash. I second the motion.
I have a motion for mayor, second from all the matters, secretary of law, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Houseman.
Yes.
Mr. Langford.
Yes.
Mr. Inver. Mr. Gross.
They can't vote, they can't vote either.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Mr. Albers.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next.
What was the resolution?
The resolution was based on what the judge wrote to discuss what happened at the time of the subdivision, not at the time of the hotel, not at the time of anything, what did we subdivide at that point? And we expanded on that, on that position.
Who's, who's, who's.
Can we give the approval knowing that something is going to come there and, and it will create a little more of a traffic? Okay, moving forward. What? I have to watch that. Uh, 4100, yes. Appeal number 4100.
New Hampshire Investments LLC, the app from. From Terry Vogt, January 28, 2019. The advocate seeking use to leave before this section 18-903M1 of the UTO to construct this, depicted as a two-story, empty basement, 88,135 square foot of retail building, parking, access, and amenities as illustrated on the variance plans. The architectural plans depict 20 retail units proposed within the building.
Standing, Mr. Chairman. Standing, Mr. Chairman. Adam.
I am here to hold on a minute. I must ask a couple of questions, unless you just have some shopping to do.
While we're waiting to the chairman, can I make a recommendation? Maybe whoever talks to the audience, the application gets thrown to the end of the evening. Or this comes automatically to next month, automatically, or, or, automatic denial. Something like that, this way.
I don't know. You know.
We're going to do something, because the talking to the audience is very disturbing, and it's very selfish of those who are talking.
I agree with you. So therefore, I would please, as the public, to please refrain from talking. If you have to say something, please step out to the outside. Um, go ahead, Adam. Who members that?
Should we make a motion for a second?
Madam Secretary.
I think it was a client's.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Fellers, and I was the advocate. I had that quiet time here. I got this one for the time.
You swear over a firm that doesn't want to be used up yet?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have two exhibits. One is sheet four, the land development plan the plan submitted. And basically it shows the subject property on Cross Street with the proposed retail building. I marked that as a one. A two is the aerial photo of the area. And I think that the Board is probably very familiar with this particular site. It's on Cross Street, on the westerly side of Cross Street to the south of the railroad tracks. If the Board recalls, there was a application for retail site on Cross Street, had a prior application, and there was a comment that if it was on the south side of the railroad tracks, that's really where it's needed. This is in an M1 zone. I'd like to start out by reading some of the permitted uses in the M1 zone. There's a few pages of lumberyards, warehouses, manufacturing, metalworks, airports, laundry cleaning, automobile assembly plants, manufacturing, public and private schools, office building, filing plants, hotels are most felt. We don't want to do a hotel. We will have Mr. Gazer ask the objection. Restaurants. So if we look at this particular property, it's particularly suited for a retail use. And the Board is in favor of ratables. This is certainly a good ratable. It's something that's needed. Cross Street has the traffic, so this would be picking up a lot of people coming to this would be people that are already on Cross Street. It's going to provide shopping opportunities for any of the homes that are going up in this area. And the Board should be familiar with them because a lot of the sites on the east side of Cross Street have been approved by the Board for townhouses and duplexes. And any development on the west side, it also will provide shopping and employment opportunities. This is a bifurcated application. All we're here this evening for is asking for the use, that the Board acts favorably on the use. We will come back here with fully designed plans. We'll show you how the engineering works, how the traffic works. We conceptually show them where there's a truck access in the rear of the building, the parking for the pedestrians in the front. I should point out that there will be a traffic signal at the location of this facility. It was shown on a plan, a CAPRA application that was approved for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. So that would be at the corner and will get the Board acts favorably. When we come back, we will have the details on...
On Cross Street?
On Cross Street, on the southerly corner of this property.
The southerly corner of this property?
Yes.
The truck access?
Well, the, just south of the property, the property south of it is where the access to the development in Eagle Ridge would be.
Over that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
And again, if the Board acts favorably on this application, when we come back, we will have those details. We have the details on the drainage, we have the details on the traffic. The Board is familiar with where Prospect Street and Cross come together. That intersection has been helped a little bit recently, but more help is on the way. The county engineer provided an update on their two projects. They've broken down the improvement of Cross Street from Route 9 to Augusta Boulevard, which is the entrance to the fairways development and the U-Cup. And that's phase one. And in January, the design was 60% done. They anticipate putting that out to bid this year and building it next year. The second phase goes from where that one stops all the way to Jackson Township, which was in January, 30% design. And they expect that to be a few months behind the other one. So within a year or two, Cross Street will be widened to a three-lane section. That provides for a center turning lane and one lane in each direction. And the intersections would be designed as five-lane geometry, which will provide for turning lanes at the intersections. And anybody that drives Cross Street knows that the traffic backs up during school times when somebody on Cross Street is trying to make a left-hand turn and he backs up everybody behind him until he gets a break in the light. With the turning lane in there, he would be out of the way and through traffic to continue through. So if the Board acts favorably on the application, we're going to come back with details that will show you what a benefit this will be, what a ratable it would be. Looking at the justification for that, if we go to the 2017 master plan, division statement says to encourage growth and development in appropriate locations consistent with established land uses. And a retail center here for all the residential development that's occurring in the Prospect Core and the vicinity is certainly does that. Encourage development, redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles such as a balanced mixed use of land uses, pedestrian-friendly and transit-oriented environments with a sense of place. This does that in that any development in the area, this will be walking distance of them and at a minimum, it is short drive, so nobody has to go into Lakewood or out to Route 9 in order to do their shopping. The master plan also on page 23 on the traffic and parking, it addresses the major issue that occurred during the master plan, which is traffic congestion. And it's not traffic flow that has, that everybody upset. Some people don't realize that they're not upset about traffic flow. They're upset about traffic congestion. Congestionism when you're trying to get somewhere and you're stopped in traffic. The improvements that the county has recognized they need to make will help with the traffic congestion. And this project, if the Board acts favorably and we move forward, it would have an impact fee associated with it to generate monies for Lakewood to provide for any improvements they need to do, as well as impact fees to the county so that the county has money to improve Cross Street and other intersections in the area. The same, on the same page, it talks about infill development. And this is an infill development to an extent in that most of the area around it is developed. You have a large vacant site of this size that'll accommodate this and provide a good ratable in an area where it's appropriate, where it has no adverse impact on any of the surrounding people or residents. The Municipal Angeles Law, NJAC 40 call and 55D2, under the purpose of the Act is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all land in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses. And this provides those opportunities. This property is particularly well-suited for this. And as I indicated at a prior application, it was the Board itself that indicated that a location for that kind of services, because those services are certainly needed. The people traveling on Cross Street, if they want to do shopping, and I know what that's like because I live nearby there, that you have to drive into Jackson, you drive out to Route 9, or you drive into town. Providing this there provides a convenience for them and a good ratable for the township. When we continue in Terry's report, he has questions relating to some of the features. And when we're asking for a use variance in this, we have to show the special reasons. The special reasons are what I indicated in the master plan and the Municipal Angeles Law. And then it falls into usually one of three categories. And in this particular case, it's promoting the general welfare. And this promotes the general welfare by providing that smart growth, by doing all the things that the master plan recommends. The testimony that Terry requested on page three of his report is with respect to the proposed architecture of the building. And we did submit an architectural plan. It'll be a very nice finish. Well, if the Board acts favorably and we come back, again, people will know it's a zoning board project because they'll drive down the street and they'll see that the landscaping that's there is irrigated, the building has...
There will be sidewalks.
Oh, no. When we come back, there will be sidewalks.
No, no, no. Not without passion. There will be sidewalks.
Well, there's a member of the public that feels that way, but I happen to know different. The uses, we don't know what the uses would be at this time. If the Board agrees with my testimony that this is a good location for that, that there's special reasons, that it's particularly well-suited, before we come back to this board, which we will have to come back for site plan approval, we will have an idea of the tenants. What we showed on there was smaller units, so that we know this location, the Board would not think was good for a supermarket, so we're not going to come back with a supermarket.
Did you say that again?
We're not going to come back with a supermarket. It's on record. And I'm sure if I didn't say it first, somebody on the Board would have said it, so I'm doing a preemptive strike. It'll be the kind of neighborhood uses that'll provide for the things that the local people could do. The, as far as the adequacy of the parking, we will not ask for parking variance. We will provide parking in accordance with the plan shows it, meeting the parking requirement. Certainly when we did a site plan and the Board acts favorably, we would not be asking for parking variance. We would provide the required parking. Even though we do anticipate people walking in the area, we also know that in Lakewood, people when they shop, they're very aggressive and we feel that the parking should be there to be benefit for the tenants in the building, it'll be a benefit for the public. And we wouldn't expect to get approval if we're asking for variance. So when you look at it in total, the parking will be more than adequate. As far as traffic impacts, if the Board acts favorably, we will meet with the county. We will have specifics on all the various traffic impacts and what the county wants as far as this applicant to contribute and this applicant, any of the construction that needs to be done. And also the sign details will be provided at that time. And we understand this project will require county approval. And the applicant will meet with the county and have those details before they come back with the site plan.
So, Ryan, do you, you know much field on shopping centers?
Yes.
Okay.
No shopping centers.
I didn't say no shopping centers.
No shopping centers in this location.
No.
Shopping centers are needed.
It has to work.
Yes.
And it has to work a little further than just a regular shopping center.
Yes.
Okay. I see a beautiful blueprint over there. I need to open a little bit.
Yep.
The only reason why I think there should be a shopping center here, but it's got to work according to my liking, okay?
Yes.
There's a lot of housing up and down Prospect Street.
Yeah.
A lot of traffic there, housing developments created, Roman Williams, that annoying, that across, coming all around.
Yep.
In my mind, if this will alleviate even 20% of that traffic, we would accomplish something in the neighborhood.
And a ratable for the township.
However, but it's got to work, okay?
Yes.
When you come back, I'm going to look at it and you'll see the traffic impact study. And we're going to see that it can't handle really the flow of traffic properly, we might tell you, you can't cross Cross Street. Left in or left out.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? I don't know that at this point.
Yeah.
But these are the things that you have to focus. Truck circulation's going to have to work. I see you started it over here, 28 feet in the back of a truck. I don't know if that's going to work either.
Well, we love the traffic documentation too.
You know, I see all this going on over here. If we can get a traffic signal right out of the Prospect and get the traffic going, it can go north, west, east, south traffic. That'd be great. But the only reason why I'm really dependent at this point is because all those housing that's up against Prospect Street, what is it about? Oh, yeah. Thousand homes coming up over there?
The Cross and Prospect Core will probably be about a thousand, yep.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah. And that is the only reason why I would, I, and aside, a question of ratables.
Yeah.
I'd like to add to what the chairman said. We're also, sidewalks, as Mr. Klein brings up, so just... Sidewalks and also, are you dedicating space to be developed to the county?
Yes.
Widen the road?
Yes.
How much?
The county now has a required width of 86 feet. So that would be 43 feet on each side. So we're going to dedicate the additional. I thought it was shown on that. But whatever the county wants. It's 86 today by the time we get it done because it just changed.
Actually, how much?
Another 10 feet.
The 10 feet will go towards...
Widening of, widening of...
Additional road portion. Yes. Well, it's going to be, it's going to be set up that there's enough right-of-way for a center lane and two lanes in each direction. And then in addition to that, put room on the side for the sidewalk and some setbacks so that there's...
You can add approval to us on site.
Yes.
Ryan, even if the county doesn't request it, we're going to request it.
To the chair?
I think that will...
Okay. Got a defense run?
Yeah.
Okay, Al.
Well, right now, Cross Street is dangerous. During high density, there was an emergency vehicle, couldn't get through. My concern is even with the center lane that's imminent is going to come, you're going to bring more traffic into this area that I think will negate that gain. And I see it just being more traffic and continue to be a danger. So the people have to shop someplace, but you're going to bring a lot of cars to Cross Street. Cross Street won't be able to handle it.
Well, if the Board acts favorably on the application, when we come back, we'll have a traffic study to show traffic improvements that we're doing, traffic improvements that the county is doing, and showing that after development, because this isn't a development that's going to happen quickly. This is a development that's going to take a while. So then after development, the traffic will be improved and it'll be acceptable levels before the Board would act favorably on the application. But we know that we're going to need to show that to it. They, what we anticipate and the traffic report would show it, is that a lot of the traffic to this is going to be vehicles that are already on the road. Now, a lot of the, once that the vehicles aren't all the way on the road, there are already shopping trips that somebody is going, they're driving from that area onto Cross Street already into town or out to Route 9 to do the shopping. People, this isn't going to bring people in from Jackson to shop in Lakewood. It's the people in Lakewood already that need to shop.
It's going to bring the thousand homes on Prospect onto Cross Street. That's not their habit.
Well, the thousand homes that were in that triangle, they're going to shop somewhere.
I, I think, Brian, I'll, let me figure this out here, okay?
Yes.
We could approve, we're not giving you any, well, you use variance.
Correct. No size, no numbers.
No numbers.
Right.
Now, when do you think this shopping center is going to get ready to build? And when the, in correlation to when Route 9 is going to be fixed? Because is this going to be before, after, or in between?
I would anticipate that it'll be at least two years before they break ground here.
Who, what will be at least two years before they break ground?
Two years before. Two years before any, if any, earth moving, any tree moving, anything...
Of the shopping center?
Of the shopping center, yes.
So what you're saying is basically this is only before, that in '21, Cross Street will be fixed.
Yes, yes.
Right? So then, you don't have a problem me telling you today that if we approve this, we'll approve it based on knowing further where Cross Street is up to. And if it's not being fixed, we'll give you a smaller center. If it is being fixed, we'll give you a larger center.
The applicant...
Then I have the group right there.
The applicant understands that when we come back, we have to show that we're not creating a problem. And the way we're not creating a problem is if improvements have been made or improvements would be required prior to COs on the building. And all that, we can certainly work out when we come back with a site plan approval where we have more details if the board acts favorably on...
So you're not planning on coming, you're not planning on bringing the site approval another year?
What, I don't know that it's going to be a year before we bring the site plan approval, but it's going to be a lot of months. And then, when we bring it...
Go ahead, I have a small good camera. Thank you.
That's all right.
I, I, I'll, I'll respond. Go ahead.
When we bring the application, the application requires county approval, which in all likelihood will take 12 to 18 months. So even if we came back to this board in six months, it would be two years before we would have all our approvals.
But when you come in six months from that, will you be able to come in with a plan, a county plan?
Yes, we're going to meet...
County, a signed county plan?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to meet with the county. We're going to find out what the county's going to require.
Yes, simply county. I want to see a full plan.
Yes.
And that's how we'll base, and that's how we'll base our, our size of the building.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
To the chair.
No.
Okay.
I asked before they nominated something. That's the essence.
Cross Street at some point needs to be a four-lane highway, but the, the, the problem with the congestion now is the intersections. And if the intersections are improved to five-lane geometry, that's going to free up the capacity. I've sat in the traffic many times myself, I'm sure you have as well. And the reason you sit is because somebody tried to make a left turn. If somebody tried to make a left turn, doesn't slow you down, there's enough capacity.
Brian, another question. You mentioned at the very, very beginning something about eagle ridge and traffic lights.
Yes.
Are you saying that the traffic light is coming only when eagle ridge is approved? Or you're hoping to get a traffic light if eagle ridge goes down and this gets worked?
We would have the details on when the traffic light could come because before you get a traffic light, you have to meet the warrants of the NJDOT. So if the board acts favorably, we will have the details on the traffic light when we come back with that application.
But this is not contingent with making sure we have a traffic light?
Well, it's contingent on making sure we show that the size of the shopping center that we built is consistent with what impact it would have so that we don't have a negative impact.
To make sure, just to be clear, I'm not asking you to be making contingent, but you want to understand what you said.
Yes.
You just said a lot of different things.
Yes.
Alluding to traffic lights, eagle ridge, understanding, okay?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just want to remind the board that we just gave approval for a commercial office to the north of this. So now, we're going to be adding almost 10,000 square feet of retail office, so I'm not going to consider it as a residential with the requirement.
I, I, I thought about it, but again, again, now that we consider on the final basis of IC, I have Cross Street up to you, because Cross Street is working.
We have to say, you know, that it's really, it's really...
Okay. I will...
Just to respond to that point, Mike, I believe that other applications also only receive use variance application. So again, everybody's going to still come back before this board to make sure it works. So again, any one property is approved there, one property passed this evening, will we come back to you? That's only part of the discussion. But just that you've already approved something, I mean, I have no idea whether you're going back.
If this is the key property because it is on the corner, so I would certainly, you know, go above and beyond.
Correct, correct.
But the county, not just what they require, but what you really need to justify that we, you know, giving you approvals and now you really enhance the neighborhood.
Maybe 135% on the parking.
Yeah. And the parking is a kill. I'm assuming this is one...
That's what we anticipated.
So it's not, I can come back, except one office is on the second floor.
And then you have to comment, say, what a banquet on the basement, or a shoe on the fourth floor.
Please help first.
Four big hours, you know? Okay. I want to know if the public, anyone in the public want to be heard on 4100, please step
Mr. Plank, you previously visited here.
Thanks, Mark.
You're from what?
We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a question for you is, who is this LLC? I'm not sure, that's an LLC, who are the principal? Who are you working for?
I'm working for the LLC, the, you have to take on the credit and the payment.
So you don't know whose individual you're working for?
Dynamic prepared plan, the dynamics...
Mr. Chairman, an application we submitted with half a day, we submitted for board, we didn't complete, rely on our application.
Okay, I'll tell you why I'm asking the question, and I got the three, the fifth over here, they don't want to identify the LLC. I see over here an application coming for the board, and some board members are trying to push it to getting approved. And therefore, is, I would like to know who the owner is over here, to know if there's any conflict of these board members, that I see some board members are trying to get it approved. Simple as that. When you have an application, when you are an applicant, and when you are engineering, you have an attorney standing right next to it, and they're trying to hide who the owner is, this is alarming, this looks like something stinks over here. Next.
It was submitted with the application. If anybody has an interest, it's safe. The sole member is Sol Mizrahi.
Now I got the answer. I did not. I did not look at it.
Nobody's hiding anything when we submit a three...
Next, another question. You said is that you'll give a waiver, you'll give a waiver. By the way, Mr. Chairman, there was mention by the planning board that one of the zoning members was not able to go on the eagle ridge application, due to conflict. I'd like to know which board member that was, is, if he has a conflict with Mizrahi over there, he should have a conflict with Mizrahi over here. Next. As far as the buffer, you said is that you are, you're not going to ask for a waiver of the buff, of sidewalks, parking, are you going to ask a waiver for the buffer and use that for parking? Buffer requirements?
We're not asking for a waiver for the buffer.
You won't be, you won't ask, that's my question.
We're not asking.
Now you're not asking. And asking is if you're committing yourself, when you're coming back for the site plan, you're going to ask the same waiver? Okay. Got the answer, he's not asking now, but he's going to ask in the future.
What?
He said there was a planning, I can't think of the other question. There was a, a master plan. Why didn't you come by the master plan or ask to change the, the zone that permitted, permits use variance for retail? Or? Why? You just see what he said? Mr. Gelli said is that I'm asking an honest question. Unbelievable. You sit on the board, comes up, some of the members of the public, and this is how he's being treated? I'm sorry, I'm sorry for what he did because you should be ashamed of yourself.
Sorry, he's, he's talking about your question, not about you, right? You repeated exactly what he said. Mr. Gelli's not saying anything to, against you. Can we move on?
Next. Next. How much? Next, move on. The master plan, as far as what you could have recommended, that you had use in M1, you could have recommended that this property should be changed. It's just alarming that you just passed a master plan. You're coming again and asking a zoning board to change. The zoning board should now be in a position to give on the size locks, decks, certain stuff is. Why is that, I'm finishing up. Why is that, that you have a, a, an application coming for the board and asking for a use when you just had a master plan? That, I'm not saying this is like a R12 changing to R15, that's ridiculous to come now for the board. I'm asking, it is a use, but why didn't you recommend to change the zone or add use in the M1, like this, this lot is conforming? Do you understand the question?
I'm not sure I understand a lot of your, your questions or logic, but the, the municipal land use law is set up that if you have a piece of property that is particularly suited to have a use that's not a permitted use of the zone, you come to the zoning board. It doesn't say you only go and ask to have the master plan changed and then, and then come and, and, and do it that way. It's specifically set up that way because it makes sense. This is a particular piece of property, particularly well-suited for the use, and it's appropriate to come to the zoning board to ask for it.
Good. Anyone else in the public want to be heard? Seeing none opposed to the public. Any final comments, whatever, or a motion? Make a motion? Anybody else? I'll make a motion to approve with a reminder of some of the things that we're looking for. Usually Jerry Huff's out, the name is important, we chime in.
Yes.
We are going to give the county space for expansion on the road. Sidewalks, above and beyond on the parking. If the township ordinance says 100 spaces, you got to go a little higher. I'm not saying a number, but you got, you can't be exactly what the township... Every other, every other shopping plan that is very intense, I think you need to go above and beyond whatever the parking is. Is there something else? Yes. And I have no size of the building, no, not, no... We're not limiting our... The size of the parking, right? Or parking spaces, size of the building, scope will be decided by that.
I believe that there was discussion that the nature of the retail would be...
Name of, no, no, not... Thank you, Jerry. Thanks, Jerry. A note that you, you already, you already mentioned on the record, no supermarkets, mom and pop tops, so it's great. Okay. We want, it's a hard, it's a busy corner, not a hard corner, and we're going to come down that you guys can actually make this a, a good corner. Okay, I have a motion for much, much like you, Madam Secretary. Secretary Mary Gellie, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
No.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes, and I have a log. Thank you. We're going to take a ten-minute break. When we come back, we will take appeal number, what's the name of the guy?
4102.
4102, that is Route, Route Burnside LLC.
The application that's not listed on line, there's probably no... 4101. I was... So for, there's five lines. They went through that, or two, or two or three. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Helen Febrich, I'm the applicant of the applicant. Therefore, I ask the member, Alan Pally, just came back from something necessarily out of a personal... I want to wish my own last. And we have a question. I actually 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 have a question.
Just for the record, we'll begin with appeal, appeal, appeal number four zero oh one zero two, Root Burnside LLC. We have two members that have more updates for this application. Therefore, a past team member, Alan Pally, just came back from something necessarily out of a personal... I want to wish my own last. And we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. Go ahead.
Have the application written?
Yes.
Forty-one oh two, Root Burnside LLC, Burnside Avenue, blocks 199, 200, 201, and 202, R-15 zone. Use variance to allow single-family homes within R-10 requirements. From Terry Vogt and Junior Planner, this is from January. The applicant requests bifurcated use, density variance relieved to necessary to construct up to 34 single-family lots within R-15 single-family residential zone. One proposed lot, number thirty-four, as illustrated as containing a rectangular footprint with four fourth Street parking spaces.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Helen Febrich, I'm the applicant. Before we get started, just on further record, since we're only having six members this evening, we would like to put forward our testimony, as is our right, and then ask the board to have a seventh member listen to the tape, and we'll come back at the next meeting for a vote, as is the board.
Okay.
That's the board policy. We are fine moving forward this evening under those guidelines.
Okay. So please proceed.
This is my candidate, called in, Mr. Gelli.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before Mr. Febrich proceeds, my name is Susan Maria. I'm an attorney of a present, this Coppermuster at 16 Gotham Drive.
Who represent?
Mr. Coppermuster?
Okay. And who's Mr. Coppermuster?
Kuzla.
Okay.
And the whole name?
And, yeah.
Because the whole name always have each other's names, I mean, you don't want...
I don't want to send anyone by name.
Okay.
Is that, is that the whole name?
No, I don't think this is the whole name.
Okay.
I know it was the last time. I do not think that the notice of the C.R. that was given is valid, or it's enough to confirm jurisdiction on the board. As the board knows, the statute requires that the notice advised public of the nature of the matter is to be considered, and it has to be in language that an ordinary layman can understand. Can't be the way it's construed by somebody who is, you know, with language technicalities, you know, planner, or where. And the variance has to be clearly stated, it has to be specific. Purpose of it is to give the reader an understanding of whether or not they should participate. It can't be general, but it's got to identify the relief this application is asking for from this board at this hearing. And this, this notice does not do that. It refers to the applicant seeking relief to develop these proposed lots in accordance with the R-10 zoning requirements. That is not sufficient for a member of the public to identify what this application is about. The people who are on this side of this bar here all understand what that means, but some person looking at that is not going to. And, you know, the variances that are needed, it's a density variance, that's what it is. It's a deep line variance, that's nowhere in the notice. Just, you know, develop R-10 as R, R-15 as R-10, doesn't convey the nature of the application. And that's...
Is there any other deficiency on the notice that you would like to bring up that I'll discuss in part?
I, I think that you might, I think you use the word bifurcated as confusing to the public. But I think that is, you know, that is the primary problem, is it does not identify the relief that's being sought, and it does in language that can be understood by a ordinary layperson.
Okay. Well, you're, I'm ready to help, yeah, I'm ready to help with you. Are you, I agree that you are, but this is an argument that's been, I don't know, this is what it has.
No, I understand. There, you know, there were...
So, you know, somebody that's just moved around, I would agree with you. But I believe most people over R-10s, and they do know where they have to go to get the answers for it. But we'll leave that as a big, an upturn to our attorney's order of final consideration.
I do understand it's standard language, but what this comes down to is how are you identifying relief, and is it sufficient?
I understand.
Okay.
And that's just, I just, I just wonder if you may be, because I'm very used to it, so I look at that way. But I know that most people can't over R-10s, and if not, they don't recall getting that information. It's a party, Alan, everyone knows everything, you know, but I'll bring it up very again.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, the notice provides applicant is seeking bifurcated use variance to enable to construct up to 34 single-family homes within R-15 zone. Applicant is seeking relief to develop these proposed lots in accordance with R-10 zoning requirements. Further, it has standard language that the application asks for a document on file for, for the public to review. It's sufficient to me in terms of the useful language.
That's, that's my vote. You're our attorney?
Yes.
And you've got a couple years to know that.
Yes.
Yes, we'll proceed.
My opinion that sufficient notice was provided.
Okay. So we will proceed. Anything else?
No, that's...
Okay. Um, Anne? You want to be noticed? I get what happened. It's up to you, ma'am. I'm ready to proceed, our attorneys said we can proceed. You decide.
Under bonus caution, I will be noticed.
You got my vote? Okay. If that's the case, we will have... You decided.
Well, so the applicant, the applicant wants to proceed tonight, again, with an abundance of caution, it does appear to be noticed unless you're hours more facility.
I agree, with a abundance of caution, we're going to be noticed.
Fine. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion? Can I have a, can I have, um, guys, one second, please. What number is it?
411.
411. Um, Adam, 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 stop one second. You're going to be on May's meeting, and you'll be noticed online without presenting any further plans or evidence.
Just be noticing.
Fine. Next, good. When is the next meeting? May 6th. May 6th, okay. May 6th, can I have a motion, Carrie, make a motion, do the lack of notice? Motion by Mayor, Mayor Yellen, Secretary of State, Woody Rose. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Yellen?
Yes.
Mr. Halderson?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Thomas, here. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
And Houchen.
Yes. Anyone that's here that's called for appeal number 4102, Burnside, please note that it will be heard on May 6th.
With three dollars.
With three dollars, and we'll look at it on the floor. Okay. Good night, if you'd like to have a break, we're going to move forward. We have, uh, my show's coming back. My show's coming back, will you come back? You have? Okay. Uh, we're going to move ahead, appeal number 4104, Morikai Icorn, Sylvan Court. Just for the record, my chamber is back on today.
What lot, 411, lot 15, R10 A zone, construct single-family home.
Please exit quietly. Everyone, please exit quietly, I do.
Variants is requested. Terry Vogt, Engineer Planner, number 11, 2019, applicant seeking new old variance within the side yard, the aggregate side yard setback to constructing a dwelling. Applicant is seeking approval to redevelop an existing single-family residential property with a new two-story home with basement, as depicted to Shane's.
Sorry, Mark.
Yes, hi.
Major, any, please, do you refer to the testimony?
Yes, I do.
And your name, that is correct.
Morikai Icorn, 8 of Young Court, Lake Wudrus.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I've put together a little bit of a quick little map, just to show the background over here of the neighborhood. It's an R10 A zone, and this area, the majority of it, is, the majority of this particular area is either duplexes, or schools, or shools. The area basically goes, the whole R10 A zone is pretty much from here till here.
What street is that?
This is, this is William Street. This is the north side of Sylvan Court. This is the south side of Sylvan Court. And this whole area is Majestic Way, which is now considered Sunset Grove. So the majority of this area is, Sunset Grove is all duplexes. Everything depicted in pink, including these two lots over here are all duplexes, except for this 1802, which is a single-family lot. 670 and 7, these three single-family lots now became duplexes. So there's two duplexes here instead of three single-family lots. This is a school...
One second, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. They became, well, they are single families, but the lot became...
These are built.
Their variance changed, or their zone changed.
Their, R10 A allows for duplexes.
So then, there are no duplexes there now?
They are, they're built.
They are? Okay, that's all true.
These duplexes are built already, there's right now two duplexes side by side. Here, this is under construction, so it's a building, some are up and some of them are not yet. And this is the shul of the neighborhood. So, just, the reason why I'm showing this is because the whole area, which is depicted in pink, all these areas, this is all either duplexes, or there's one single lot here, these are all seven and a half by some side setbacks. So, not only are they duplexes, they also have the R10A, which normally calls for a 10 and a 15, aggregate of 25, but they all have the precedent of seven and a half, or 7.75 by side setbacks. These also have seven-foot side setbacks. And what I'm asking over here for is on the single-family lot, which is the yellow, it's a 50 by 200, I want it actually to stay as a single-family lot, if possible. For now, no, but I want it to stay as a single-family lot. Anyway, so, with that being said, being as a 50-foot wide lot in our R10A zone, it meets the requirement of a 10,000 square foot lot. However, being that it's only a 50-foot wide, it makes it very difficult to be able to build a single-family, a wide, single-family house. So, as a result of that, that's what I'm coming in here for. We had it on the, someone approached me to purchase this property, to build their own single-family house over here, but they would only purchase it with the condition that it's a 35-foot wide house, otherwise it's a little bit hard to build a single-family, a single-family house a little narrower than 35 feet wide.
I can't believe that you wouldn't be able to sell it otherwise.
Um, it's possible, I can't say it's impossible, but...
Real estate, or like, you like yourself.
I guess you're overestimating my ability, obviously, but 35-foot wide house is a much more desirable, you know, width, in terms of single-family buyers. So that's what I'm here today for, is to ask for a seven-and-a-half-foot wide setback, which is an aggregate of 15, which very much fits into this neighborhood. And, first of all, also, this particular lot was already, is a non-conforming, single-family lot in terms of side setbacks, even as existing, on one side it's nine foot, and on the other side I think it's 9.6 feet. So as it is, it's kind of already non-conforming. And the same applies to almost every house, besides for lot 17 and lot 10 on this block, and lot 71, they're all, all the lots that are on 50s, all have existing non-conforming side setbacks because of the narrowness of those particular lots.
What, I think?
Throughout the whole block, and they're...
I'm just, I'm just camera.
The range, anywhere between seven and nine, I think, that's probably the average.
Okay.
But I can't say 1,000%, because I didn't do any survey work on the rest of the, rest of the block.
Is there existing houses in there?
Yes, there is.
Old?
Old, it's like 7, 800 square feet, it's like a small envelope, yeah.
Okay.
So, I think it would be, I think it would be an advantage to have a nicer home built on the block, especially a newer home and a nice-sized home. So, that's what I'm here for today, is to, number one, there is a variance in terms of the width of the, this lot is only a 50-foot wide, but that you see on the rest of this block, lot 8, lot 76, 75, 74, 16, 72, this block seems like that's how it was cut up initially, as 50-foot wide. And then in terms of the side setbacks, I'm asking, based on, it seems like it would fit into the rest of the overall impression of the neighborhood, we have so many of these lots, all already at seven, either seven-foot wide side setbacks, or at seven and a half. And that's when you have a single, the duplexes only have seven on one side, on the other side they have nothing. So, this kind of has a little bit something nice about it, it'll actually have 15 in aggregate, and it'll be a single-family lot, a single-family house on that block.
The houses on either side, are they newer houses?
Old, old.
So we don't know if it was kind of there.
Correct, but there's newer houses.
No, uh...
Yeah, those are, yeah.
The house on either side.
It's a side. There's, all the newer houses are all duplexes for now.
Okay.
The house next door on the left side is an older woman, she's actually a police officer, her name is Mrs. Bresson, I think she's a police officer in time, her mom, his mom, and she looks like, hopefully, hopefully she's out, she lives 120, but she's delivered us a lot, a lot of years, and she's very happy to stay there for as long as she can.
Okay.
Now, there were some of the, I just wanted maybe, I'm not sure at the times now, but I just wanted to point out on some of the comments that Terry had, on one particular point, he mentioned about the coverage, that it's only 30% coverage. I just wanted to bring everyone's attention that there was at one point an ordinance that was passed in 2016, 2016 dash 34, that the R10A maximum building coverage was changed from 30% to 35%. So I'll be asking if I can maintain that same ordinance and have a 35% coverage. And, there was one other point here, mentioned about the contradiction, or the differences between the plans that were shown, the architectural plans that were shown versus the, the actual zoning map that was shown. Our intention over here would be is to build as much as we can with these side setbacks, so seven and a half and seven and a half if possible. I know there's a 30, there's a 30-foot setback in the front and a 20-foot rear setback, so that would technically give us an ability to build 35 by 150. Obviously, we're not going to build that big, but we're looking for as much as we possibly can, whatever the intention of the buyer would be.
I'm confused. 30-foot front yard setback, you okay with?
Yeah.
Okay, so, 20-foot, you okay with the back?
Correct.
So then, I don't understand what you're asking for.
No, it was just mentioned.
Average.
Yeah, lots of 35%, that's all.
A 30, a 35%.
Was that on the application?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a discrepancy, Chairman, between the use variance plot and the architectural plan.
You, you...
That was referenced in the letter.
Mm-hmm. You have about, what is it, 50 feet to the back? 50, 60 feet to the, from the back of the house to the, to the, to the, to the property lot?
Yeah, we have plenty of room, I mean, we have, we have a footprint technically of 35 by 150, we're not using, you know, close to that.
35 by 150 is way over 34%.
Correct, correct, so obviously we're sticking to 35%.
If you were to stay at 34%, where would we end? 35 by wide, or 1, or 150?
35% of 10,000 will be a 3,500 square foot footprint.
No, 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 I know that, but if you were to stay at 35.5, and you want to stay at 35 with width, how deep can you build that house?
Okay, if I want to stay at 35, you said 35 by 100?
35 by 100?
Would be 35, would be 30.
Okay.
Would be 3,500, yeah.
Would be 3,500. And this house is, is now 35 by...
We have no idea what, what the potential buyer is going to build, but the architectural plans that we showed was just a, a plan that Mr. Fram would show us from DF Design of a practical house that could be built.
So you're...
That's a much smaller house, I don't want to be restricted to a small footprint if possible.
So right now you're 35 by 48?
Correct, correct. So we would like to be unrestricted 35 by 42 if possible.
Okay.
Got a question, Chairman, the, the building coverage is going to be 30% or less, can I...
I'm sorry? You're not going to hear my...
The building coverage is going to be 30% or less.
Well, that's what I was, I was pointing at.
Yeah, what, 34 or more?
I was just pointing at that it's 30, that the ordinance allows up to 35% of R10A.
Is, is that correct, friend?
I would have thought.
Okay.
You, you show us...
What we have in front of us is a 30% maximum on the plan.
Correct, you showed us a plan of 35 by 45.
I, I just want to make sure that if the...
He's got to 35, the ordinance.
The ordinance allows 35?
That's what he said, he's got to do what...
That's his ordinance. Okay. This is 2016 34, where it was amended for the residential zone R10A. According to this ordinance, which was adopted August 18, 2016, it was increased to 35%. So, 35% appears to be the limit then.
So they go to 35?
He went to 35% according to the ordinance 2016 34.
Right. So, help me out here, so technically he could build over here, 35, 35, is that the side that set back, the variance, he could build 35 by 100 times two, two floors?
Correct.
Seven and a half thousand square foot.
Seven.
Seven thousand square foot of home on, on this lot.
That would be correct.
I'm going to be the first time, I mean.
What about the attic is that the story?
Yeah, and I forgot the, I had a hundred stories of this, although.
Right.
Yeah, but, but, but.
Yeah, obviously, that's not the intention over here, but, it's, it's possible.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
True.
Okay, guys, what do you guys want to do? Anyone in the public wanting to be heard, please step up, 4104, please step up.
I'm, um, this application is somebody, Mr. Icorn. I know this individual many, many years, he's a real man. The reason why I'm bringing this up is, he didn't put this application on LLC, the hide behind a veil, semi-hair, the difficulty, the maternity fees. He comes like a man, this is me, I'm coming up, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm making, this is what I'm building, he comes up like a man, he doesn't lie, he just says the stuff the way it is. He's a, that, that, that's, he's an example of how people should apply for applications, present applications, and kudos to him.
And he's an example for how objectors and public should pay to, and kudos to him. Thank you. Anyone want to say something, or motion, or whatever?
First, I have to close the book.
Oh, yeah, I, I should close the book.
I would like to make a comment. I, I, first I thought that this was the house you were going to build, but now you're mentioning under, but no, I have some issues with this house, because it has two entrances to the basement, and it also has a stairway on the side that's continuous to the attic, which the board never likes.
No problem, that was not the intention. You can close and restrict that, I didn't notice that, but, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a no problem.
And we're looking at now.
Will you move inside door?
We're going to, one entrance to the basement.
By the way, my... This house is not going to be 35 by, by 45, it's going to be 35 by 100, because he wants to stay to 35%.
Right.
Nor forget that the 35% that he would have been, the seven and a half side and set up, he's asking, the house can be 100 feet long.
Right.
So it might not be an entrance to the basement on the side.
Maybe we should restrict it to another entrance.
Or, or anything.
They'll do a big...
Just look at it, just look at it.
The house is that big, a lot of time, it's, it's, yeah. They'll do a side, they'll do a side entrance, and then they'll stack two basements, so you come down and you go to the right or the left, yeah, big base. So, maybe it's worth doing one entrance into the front, and no continuous stairs to the attic.
If, if, if your idea is to restrict somebody from making two apartments in basement, make one door, it's not going to happen.
Right.
And it's going to be dangerous up your front door if your house is 100 feet long. So, everybody knows the law, the lawyers have one apartment in the basement, if somebody wants to defy the law, they'll defy it, but I wouldn't restrict ours to one.
Mayor, everyone knows the law, everyone knows what they need.
Right. But I, it's not going to save it.
Doesn't the board always ask for one entrance?
Yeah.
The average. It's like, it's going to make a difference.
Yeah, but that's the act.
Yeah, the acting are 100% agreed, there's a question about it, but if you have a apartment basement, and the owner of the upstairs can also have a part of the basement himself, he wants to get out of the basement without going through the bathrooms.
You have internal...
No, so you have to do that, why not?
But I think we should, as, as, as a president, you know, you always want one door, you'll figure out how to make it work, one door.
Sure.
And maybe you have another door back, the, the...
Listen, a 100-foot, with a 100-foot...
I remember, guys, I remember the good old days, we used to try, Woody, you might remember this, in the good old days, we even decided on to control this illegal, this second apartment, we put a valve or doors in the back. Guys, you remember that? You remember that?
I didn't remember.
No, it didn't work.
Just want to comment that we have a, a, a notorious, if you're not familiar with the language we operate, then we should...
Go ahead, go for it.
So usually what we do is when we build a home, you know, it should be one third still, it should, there should be the, a location, and, and landscaping, so, right? Okay.
And to the act, you said to that.
And then, the, if, if the attic will be fixed... And then, the, if, if the attic will be finished, it will be only from the center of the house, not from the continuous set of stairs on the side of the house.
On the inside.
On the inside, correct. On the interior of the home.
So I, the only one point I just want to ask is that, that the two doors, sometimes you have, I'm okay with not having a front and a side, but sometimes you have on the side itself, you have sometimes the people, you have the people going upstairs. They, they, they actually enter in the same platform almost, but they have a little door separating between the two of them, and the doors are like within three feet apart, but one person walks down, one person goes up, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just that that's, that should, should continue to the attic.
No, I'm talking about the two doors you mentioned, the basement, that you should have two doors, if they're side by side, they're actually...
Outside the doors, you should refer to outside the doors, not...
That's what I'm saying, they do, they have two doors on the outside, so they don't enter in the same door. They do, there's no entrance in the, in the front.
Single entrance to the basement.
Oh, a single entrance to the basement.
Anywhere on the house.
That second door shouldn't bring you down to the basement, you don't put that another entrance way, like one ten feet there, another entry to the basement.
That's fine.
Okay, um, is everyone okay? Any other questions?
I don't, I don't have a motion.
Yes, can I have a motion? Put that in motion.
Yes.
Okay, so we got a motion. Um, would you go second, Madam Secretary, or both of us?
Yes. Mr. Albersen?
Yes.
All right, this again.
Yes.
Mr. Nattali?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, good night, good luck, Morning. Thank you very much, have a good one. Good morning. Um, forty-one oh six, Orange Pool Holdings LLC.
The applicant is seeking materialist belief in a forty, section eighteen dash nine oh three M of U D O to construct a two-story seventeen thousand two hundred eighty square foot mixed use retail office building, parking access and amenities as illustrated on the variance plan. As illustrated on the variance plan, the first floor is identified as retail use and the second floor is identified as office use.
Yeah, we'll approve for this, too. Do you understand?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a progress, we have the applicant. Brian Flann, we're here to kind of have this way of...
Mr. Flann, if we have a sworn, uh, swear of firm, that firm got to be a...
I do. Brian Hunter Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional and manager of the plant. I've marked three exhibits. A one is a copy of the tax map showing the subject property orange. A two is an aerial exhibit showing, uh, the subject property, uh, in the middle of the prospect, uh, across the triangle. A three is a rendered copy of the plan, showing the center of it, the proposed retail, uh, with the approved duplex development around it. Uh, if you look at A one, um, and I'm sure the board's familiar with, uh, this part of the across the prospect triangle, because you've had a lot of applications that have come in. First, they came in for the two thousand and seven master plan, and then they came in for smart road plan, uh, and requesting, uh, multi-family in the M one zone. The entire triangle piece that you see is all the M one zone. Then they came, near the corner is the existing office building, uh, next to it is the existing office building. You have the long cross street, you have a school and another office. A walk of prospect street, starting from the corner, you have an approved duplex development right next to the, uh, the office building, a, a big, almost like orchard shaped property with another approved seventy-five unit that hasn't been started yet, that will surround this entire property. Uh, then you have a smaller approved duplex development, and then you have the townhouse development that's, that's under construction. So it's, this is an infill lot, uh, it's one acre that's in among all these houses, uh, and we're proposing retail, it would be neighborhood retail. Uh, the building certainly isn't big enough for a, uh, grocery store, and, and we would understand it would not be a grocery store, we're looking for something that all these houses that are around it, uh, would be close enough that they'd be even walk to. Looking at the, uh, first thing I'd like to redo is this is in the M one zone, so the M one zone provides, uh, research, development, lumberyard, warehouse, and manufacturing network, therefore, it's laundry, water assembly plants, and...
I'm still interrupting from the, um, wishing basket, so we're going to be...
Would that be your location of mine, or you'd rather... Well, we, we, we could, we could ask then, listen to the pavement, and do a vote at the next meeting.
We're, 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 we're serious, let me know.
I'll stay for a few more minutes, I have to stop. Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll speed it up. None of the uses in the M one zone make any sense there. What makes sense there is, is what we provided. The, uh, the vision statement from the two thousand and seven master plan is encouraged to develop, development and redevelopment. There's an existing house there now, a hotel that...
The bike, the...
Uh, yes, the bike related applications. Uh, the, uh, the master plan, uh, the strategies indicate encourage redevelopment of existing unutilized sites, this is definitely that. Uh, encourage compact cluster community design, which is what this does when you put a retail use in the middle of it. It talks about the same traffic congestion and infill that I spoke about before. One thing different about this that I'd like to point out is this area is in a formerly land use, land use district that was approved by the, uh, the planning board and adopted by the town committee, and if the site was three acres where this was part of the townhouse, it would be permitted use. Uh, site has to be three acres in order to qualify that, and it's got to be mixed retail and, and, uh, and residential. We don't have mixed retail residential, we just have the retail that goes with the residential that already is there. It's called across the prospect street for purpose of that, land use district is to permit a mixture of residential, commercial, and public uses in order to implement the recommendations of the two thousand and thirteen master plan. So this is doing what the master plan says, this is doing what it is, providing a small retail site, uh, the municipal land use law, they, this will be going fifty-five, they do unto the purpose of the act, encourage this election to guide urban use development of all areas of state, no matter what, it's a whole hotel state, or if you have a welfare district, it does it. It's particularly suited for them, for special reasons that are all met by the, the master plan. Uh, it's, it's on Prospect Street, which will certainly be helpful here. I remember one application with a chair, somebody wanted to do it across the street, and the chairman said if it was on the other side of the street, it would be ideally located. Will you back with one that's ideal?
This is Chairman Master. That's all I got, over my glasses.
It was flatter. Um, I can't really see from the, during the effect, but around the, well, around the site, the, 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 wow, no way. Um, are you going to put, like, trees or fence or something, because your back is your...
Yes, well, the rear of it...
Brian, right now, you can, you can show them.
The, the rear of it goes to an open space, uh, and, and certainly we would do a fence and landscaping in the other areas, but this, this is an open space lot, so that's why we, we orient it in that fashion, so that it's not in any ways backdoor. Along here, we have parking, we have offensive landscaping, and, and we provide all those details in the board act favorably.
And you're asking for relief on the parking also?
No, no.
So you will have sufficient parking?
We will have sufficient parking.
We don't know, we're not giving you a number of, we don't know.
Well, we're not, we're not giving them parking variance, let's be clear, whatever.
We're not giving you a number of square footage or anything, you gotta prove to us that it works and it runs. I see how this is flowing, I looked at it already, you know how we have a, a, it's got to work, it's got to flow. Fourteen feet in the back is kind of tighter truck to roll around back there, playing it out, okay?
In any manner that we come with, will not detain a parking back.
Mr. Chairman, of these lots that aren't built yet, right?
That is correct.
Were they programmed?
They're programmed.
Are they, are they sold?
Um, well, they, they can't be sold because the map isn't filed. We don't have county approval yet. Remember, in the last application, I told you it takes two years to get county approval? Well, you can get approval to clear prior to the county approval.
So when you, when you gave notice, would, none of these future buyers know about this?
To best of my knowledge, this is not marketed yet, the market, there are a lot of them. You know that, you know that, this property?
Yeah.
All the houses around it?
To best of my knowledge, they have not, is not on the market, because they've given the maps on file, that we're at the county, that she got, uh...
Is it really a party, whoever's familiar with this?
Uh, no, no.
Saying we can't really tell them that to notify the buyers, to take away the...
Morning, when you weren't here, um, I think, remember they approved that piece, I was pushing up the volume, that, that little piece, and all the excuses we got, why we can't buy this little piece. Someone left it...
Was this one of the excuses?
It was one of these, that, that the chairman said, that it's better to put the shots to the other side, so you don't keep them or something.
Well, we could certainly provide notification to, uh, that other applicant, so that they have full disclosure that they have to make to the buyers, uh...
Just try to put them on the, so, uh, caution.
Yes.
Should not, all these people come back, my caution, my this, my that.
Yes.
I think the ones had an application where it was, the, the houses were under contract, and, and we, they had this...
Portions.
When they were changing lot sizes and stuff.
That's correct.
My comment, Mr. Chairman, is that it, it, it's smacking on the retail, so not that I have an issue with the use, but it's, to me, I really want to see a building that's not too, um, you know, I don't know, excessive, excessive. It should, well, it should, it shouldn't be overbearing, you know, it shouldn't tower all the houses, or there's a, I think a second floor office is pushing it. I think retail will accommodate maybe the locals, might work, but the second floor retail is, is already kind of pushing it.
Like a nice thatched group, monchusery, like, of, of, of...
We, we, we would certainly, the board act favors, when we come back, we would have architecture that would blend in with the area, and something that we would show the board. And, and to Mr. Ingber's comment, maybe we could reduce some of the upstairs areas.
Definitely, I would, I would say no upstairs, but definitely reduce it and try to blend it in to make it more...
Yes, well, architecturally, we would have it...
What worries me is, it does not look like a square box.
Yes.
You know, like, you go, oh, you should bury a red bank, you have these, uh, medieval style old stores and old fashioned wooden year buildings, you know, that's more flows and blends in there.
The mayor brought a good point, really, all these people are going to be sheltered when they figure out that their commercial building is going on their backyard, so it should really be a, 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 an eye, pleasant type of, you know, building.
Yep.
I believe the one that came in front of us had this weird looking structure design that was further down, um, which you mentioned, that was on the other side.
Right.
It's very, like, you know, in your face, like, right, so to be conscious of that.
Yes.
Okay, um, did I have a question to talk about? Yes, you did. No, I didn't. Oh, I didn't. No, I didn't, Mr. Flann, I listened to you. Okay, um, I'll look to the public, appeal number forty-one oh six, Orange Pool Holdings LLC, anyone in the public, please step up. Yeah, Brian, who is Orange Pool Holdings LLC?
I, I deal with Aaron Weinstein.
Aaron Weinstein, so most probably, because you said before, is there's two different owners, so obviously, there's no, this property.
Well, I, I deal with Aaron Weinstein on this property, who had nothing to do with...
I understand, I understand. Okay, um, just one more question that I have, um, it seems like the, the zoning board is like, um, disregarding the M one and just putting the use of retail when you should have done it in the master plan, but let's not...
It was not in the master plan.
So why, yeah, why you here?
If this was together, it would be conforming, the, the...
Oh, 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 got you, thank you.
The client does want mixed use here.
Got you. If they were to come, and there's one owner, you would be able to get residential and mixed uses, and therefore, you would have been the planning board. Just as far as retail, I keep on mentioning over here, I know is that, you know, if you're going to sell this, and you're going to have a grocery store as retail, I understand that you have people walking distance going to the grocery store, but obviously, that's not a retail that is proposed over here. One type of retail is there that the people in the neighborhood will constantly use it and not create traffic from the outside, more as...
It's, it's small shops, and, and would be...
Like what type of retail?
Grocery store, not as good as the DC you get down here, uh, in downtown, uh, but it would be, you know, a small convenience store, so that's saying that the, the scene would, would walk to, so that they, uh...
So I keep on hearing from the board, they're not listening, one word that I'm saying, the chairman didn't know that I was air ready, or not, it was so many stuff, and that means he's not even listening. But as far as shopping center, is a grocery store a small grocery store, or is it over here, or they don't want shopping center?
They don't want a grocery store, because a grocery store brings in a lot of traffic and a lot of volume that...
Let me correct you that, since I was listening, we don't want a box store, which creates a lot of traffic. Small little shops isn't, is fine, because even though it might create a lot of traffic, but at least they're traffic for servicing of unholding functions.
What is like with a small grocery store?
Like cleaners, a little bit of digga, um, I call it, as we call it in Hebrew, um, a shoe store, a farm shop.
It is permitted in the...
You know, shoe repair, pizza place, stuff like a pharmacy, uh, but not the women lot, not an equity.
A small grocery store, like Superstar?
It, you know, if it fits in within the size of the store, that they have fifteen hundred square feet, the two thousand would be the one.
Fine, okay, thank you.
But nothing, we won't change our mind by the, by the second.
I'll give you all your money.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we're closing the policy now. Can I have a motion at a, um, about, for five of them, as I should say?
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion for some five of them. She's, I'm making a motion to approve some five of them.
Okay, I have a motion for Morning Gross, um, but remember, all the Morning, you...
Only the use.
Only the, you remember, the, the, nothing, 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 nothing.
Everything's on the table.
Everything's on, open on the table. Okay, I have a motion for Morning Gross, um, second, for Morning Gonzalez, Madam Secretary, or both of us?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
The Albersen?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, deny your law. Um, can I have, um, minutes, uh, the resolutions request, um...
What about the sign?
The sign, the sign. The, 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 the wall, at the time, was a wall.
The fence.
The fence, yeah. The word was a trumpet wall. We've got, yeah, yeah. Morning wanted that, the Morning red hat. Chairman, you did a good job, because next time, when the wall comes up, I need a red hat, every one.
Mr. Shamen, the... Not advocate, but...
Come on.
Well, that's...
So last time, he did not advocate, then this, he did not advocate. We could have been mistaken, but it's not notified his names.
Got it, okay, whatever. Sorry, can we have sheriff's hat? Is that a red hat?
Mutual sheriff.
Okay, so bring a sheriff hat.
Mutual sheriff hat.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to pay the bills.
Can I have a motion to pay bills? Paul, can I have a motion of five resolutions?
Aye.
Paul, I can, I can, I'll, I'll...
You have a motion for resolutions?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close the meeting?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Cross the door, Paul.
Night.
The wall acts, the big wall, you got one.
You found out the very same ground. Terry, Terry, stay home. You're the last one to go for the debate. That's what I wanted to do, Terry, thank you, bye, I'm giving you the...
Thanks for the wall. Very nice. I mean, uh, we, we, this is very nice to you. Yeah.